Sit down. Okay. Good morning and welcome to the July 18th Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake. We'll call this meeting to order and we will start with a moment of silence. Do you have one?
You have one?
Yeah.
You want to go first or second?
So, I'm not going to provide a name because I don't have permission to do this, but we had another vehicle pedestrian death in the city of Clear Lake. Unfortunately, this is becoming too normal of a thing for this to be expressed at the dais, another loss of life due to vehicular accidents. All I can ask is, please slow down. You're going to get to your destination and if you're late, then please leave early, but don't make other people's lives be at risk because you are choosing to drive erratically or choosing to drive fast. I know there was another one that happened in Nice, I believe. Luckily, that person, I don't believe succumbed to their injuries. But there are choices being made every day and those choices affect many other people on the road. We all share this road and if we could please just slow down, be respectful out there, please. And if we can hold that person in our thoughts, sorry to not drop a name, but I don't have permission from the family at this moment in time.
All right. So I have a moment of silence for Tom Patton. I've been given this by a constituent who asked me to do it a couple of weeks back, but I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'll do it now. And Tom Patton passed away on June 6, 2023. He was beloved by his family and his many, many friends, kind and generous to a fault. Tom was always there to be a helping hand to anyone who asked. He and his wife Amy settled in Laserna after his parents, Barbara and Jay Patton, built a vacation cottage on the lake which eventually became their year-round home, sorry. Tom attended high school in San Jose, California and lived at various times in both Northern and Southern California. Once settled in Lake County, Tom immediately became a dedicated community volunteer. For over 40 years, he donated his time to many different agencies, including the American Red Cross Lake County Chapter and the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE. Despite having very poor vision for most of his life, eventually turning to blindness in later years due to a long, long-time battle with glaucoma, he was always extremely good with his hands and could fix nearly anything he set his talents to. He especially loved cars and many times brought old cars back to life with his mechanical aptitude. Tom and Amy were longtime ham operators. Tom loved to get on the radio and talk for hours to people he would find who had interesting backgrounds. His pleasant manner and infectious laugh made him a favorite companion for ham operators worldwide. Tom built his own radio station for ham. He will be sorely missed and the memorial service already had, have been had already, but we'll keep him in our moment of silence here.
Supervisor Crandall, will you lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure, leadings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items? No?
No, we do not.
Okay, then we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. If any items need to be pulled. Supervisor Spatier?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item 5.9, I believe, yes.
Anything from the public? Okay, then back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve, and actually, are you on Zoom?
Oh, anyone in Zoom?
I can't check on that. I'm not on the panel.
Oh, yeah, I'm not either.
Hands up in Zoom?
I, yeah, I don't have.
There are presently no hands up in Zoom.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted with the exception of 5.9.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Just wait one minute until our 9:06 item.
There we go.
Okay, it's 9:06. We'll move to our 6.1 item, public input, and we do have a form. Michael Wagner, do you want to come up? You can state your name and have three minutes.
My name is Michael Wagner. I just wanted to bring up a conversation that I had with Fire Chief Ritz. I recently moved from Kelseyville up to Lakeport and I guess when you change your location, kind of things pop up that you didn't maybe notice before. And I noticed that Station 52, the fire station up over here off of Parkway is, you know, shut down and got kind of the backstory from the captain about, or chief, about what had happened and how it kind of got to that point. And I was contacting him to see if there was something I could do to be helpful for him. And he basically brought to my attention that they had much bigger issues, which come down to staffing. They're down approximately 12 to 15 paramedics and firefighters across the county. In further conversations, it sounds like this has been an issue for everybody. And so I bring this up not as a complaint or to be critical, but really to just bring it to light and see if there's something that can be done to help fund these departments or even see that they are able to bring in a pervasive wage to retain the employees that they do have. I know that everybody is working on how to make the numbers line up and pencil out and nobody wants fire departments and paramedics to be down. So I would just like to bring up that point and ultimately be looking to find a solution for that problem. With that, I know that you guys are very busy as it is, so I am going to move forward in those realms, looking for some way to be helpful. For me, life's full of problems, right? So I'm not trying to come and present problems to you guys. I want to come back with some kind of solutions, not just further issues for you. So with that, I'd love any input, direction, or what you have to say about it, either directly now or at a later point in time. I'm always available. Thank you.
So thank you for your comments. And during public comment, we can't have a dialogue about this, but you could talk to us individually after?
So no dialogue, but we do have 6.5 consideration of a Workforce Alliance of North Bay report and that possibly can fit right into that conversation of how do we find more? So I would say stick around.
Okay, do we have any other public comment?
Good morning. Sorry, I forgot about the paper. Mireia Turner, Director of Community Development. Our department strives to provide exceptional public service. We do this through recruitment, retention, professional development, and fiscal sustainability. But one of the things that we can't train, support, or create is character and a concern for the community and a willingness to jump in and help when help is needed. And for that reason, at today's public input, I'd like to honor and recognize two of our code enforcement officers who have shown this level of character and this exemplary concern for their community. So if Code Enforcement Linda Rosas Bill and, our Officer Linda Rosas Bill and Antonio Chavez Anguiano would please come up and join me? Thank you. On the afternoon of June 21st, our two officers were proceeding through their normal daily rounds. They were flagged down on the side of the road on Highway 20 just west of Clear Lake Oaks. They observed a white vehicle that was flipped on its side. They came out, they left their vehicle, they went in and helped investigate. Inside, there were two passengers, both about 70 years of age, trapped in the vehicle. Officer Anguiano and Rosas Bill proceeded to assist the female sitting on the passenger side front seat to remove her from the vehicle. Two additional persons appeared on the scene, at which time they assisted Officer Anguiano in removing the male, who appeared trapped and was sitting on the driver's side front seat. They actually had to push out the front windshield to get him out. While assisting, while Officer Anguiano was assisting with this removal, Officer Rosas Bill called 911 for emergency assistance. And they both stayed on the scene with the two victims and conducted traffic control until the emergency vehicles arrived. It's our great honor, both me as a director and our whole department, which has run down here just for this event, to honor Officers Linda Rosas Bill and Antonio Chavez Anguiano for their exemplary service. We're thankful for them and we think that they bring honor to our department. Thank you.
Sam, can we get a picture? Director, yeah. You want to get in with them, Director Turner? Thank you for bringing this to us and thank you both for your service.
Good job, guys. You do good work.
Do we have any other public input? Any in the Zoom room?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay. Our next item is 6.2, 9:07 Pet of the Week. Oh.
Hello, I'm Officer Guard. This is Iris. She's a domestic medium hair. She's two months old. I work for Animal Control in Carrot. She came in as a rescue. She had a little bit of eye, you know, gum up. We got it all cleared up. She's her kitten. I mean, she just loves to be loved. She's a really good cat. We got, I think, three other ones in there for adoptable right now. Our kennel is full of dogs. If you guys would like to adopt one, come down to 4949 Hellbush and give us a call at 263-7028. But this is her. She's a good cat. Thank you, guys. You guys have one for the...
Thank you. 6.3, 9:08 New and Noteworthy at the Library. There we have Director Veach.
Thank you, yes. I'm Christopher Veach, County Librarian, and thank you for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. Each month, I want to highlight a title from the library and this month, I wanted to highlight a very popular nonfiction title right now, which is Outlive: The Science and Art of Longevity by Dr. Peter Attia. And this book is written by a Stanford-educated surgeon and it isn't just about living longer, but also being healthier. The author, Dr. Attia, argues that our society and medical system sometimes treats health as a binary question, alive or dead, and doesn't focus enough on the quality of life and our health. He outlines some different ways the reader can think about health to make the best individual plan for themselves to live a long and also healthy life. And this book's very popular. It has over 225 requests in all of its different formats. And you can request it as an ebook, audiobook, or print copy through our online library catalog, which has the combined resources of Lake, Sonoma, and Mendocino County library systems and provides so much more to county residents than any one library alone. Requesting items is completely free to library patrons and if you request a physical item, you can come pick it up at your local branch. And no surprise, the book Outlive promotes exercise as a great way to live longer, but also enjoy life more. And so, one, we have lots of different ways you can do that through the library and one is by visiting our local state park. And you can get in for free by checking out a Parks Pass from the library. This Parks Pass works at a huge number of California state parks and you can check it out for 21 days from your local branch and take it to a state park and enjoy what they have to offer. The library is also working together with our Clear Lake State Park to host a storytime for kids every Wednesday at 10:15 throughout the summer. So if you have little ones, please join us there. You can ask for directions at the front kiosk and you don't have to have a Parks Pass. For that purpose, they'll let you in for free. And then for adults, I want to invite you to our Happy Trails Hiking Book Club. This is a walking book club that meets at various locations around Lake County for themed book discussions. This month's theme of discussion is about marshes or wetlands and you can read fiction or nonfiction titles about that subject and then come share what you read at the book club while we hike. To sign up, give the Red Bud Library a call at 707-994-5115. The next meeting is on Saturday, January 29th at 8:00 a.m. So you can learn more about the events and services available at the library at our website at library.lakcountyca.gov or visit your local library branch in either Lakeport, Clear Lake, Middletown, or Upper Lake. And thanks again for listening to What's New and Noteworthy at the Library.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Anyone from the public or in the Zoom room? Not today?
No hands.
All right. Thank you, Christopher, for joining us today.
Thank you.
6.4, our 9:10 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of July 16th through the 22nd, 2023, as Probation Services Week. And we have Director Crandall.
Good morning.
Come on up here. Everyone up here.
Way I can read it. And I can look like I'm surrounded. All right. Well, thank you all for coming on up. Let me push this thing up a little more. Greatly appreciate all the work you all do. I'm glad you're all here to be here for this proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read this proclamation, Designating the Week of July 16th through the 22nd, 2023, as Probation Services Week. Whereas probation is an alternative to incarceration and Lake County probation's mission is to ensure a safer community while providing effective supervision and rehabilitation services to justice-involved individuals. Whereas probation utilizes an accountability lens to be a connector and bridge for justice-involved individuals to receive the individualized rehabilitative services they need to be successful. Whereas probation professionals play a unique and essential role in our justice system and communities, probation is focused on helping justice-involved individuals transition out of the system permanently through transformative and evidence-based rehabilitation. Whereas probation officers are trained experts to apply an equity lens to manage trauma and other individualized needs of justice-involved individuals and safely supervise and connect them to the resources they need. Whereas probation employees are diverse and educated professionals focusing on providing collaborative safety for our communities. Whereas probation connects services and needs to enhance community, safety, and the restoration of justice-involved individuals. Probation is a connector in the justice system, bridging the gap and maximizing the resources available with the courts, local governments, law enforcement, social services, behavioral health, schools, crime survivor organizations, nonprofits, and the community to reduce recidivism by carefully balancing direct human services and research-based deterrence and interventions. Whereas by delivering sustainable community safety, probation has a profound impact on the health and safety of our communities. By working to reduce recidivism through evidence-based programming and supervision, probation's success helps ensure our communities are safer for all Californians to live and prosper. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Lake County that July 16th through July 22nd, 2023 may be recognized as Probation Services Week to highlight Lake County's probation's immense contributions to our community, adopted this 18th day of July 2023, signed Jessica Paeska, Chair of the Board of Supervisors. All right.
Thank you, Board. The probation department staff is a group of dedicated individuals who are committed to changing lives in Lake County for the better. They do this by ensuring safety, encouraging people to make better choices, collaborating with partner agencies, and interacting with the community. I am proud to accept this proclamation on behalf of all of our team and thank this board for taking the time for this honor and recognizing the contributions to Lake County.
I'm going to ask, but I don't think any of you want to say anything. I knew, I knew. Just wanted to make sure, you know. Anybody from the Board of Supervisors?
I'll just keep it brief. Thank you all for trying to change people's lives. You're a support system for people who may not have a support system and I appreciate it because we're all working towards the same thing. So thank you very much for what you do out there.
And the report that we received highlights all of your efforts and I concur with my colleague here. Thank you for everything that you do.
And I want to thank probation. There was a presence out at the Fourth of July celebration here in Lakeport. This year and every year, that's a very big event to keep a handle on. I see you at all our events. You're so visible, you're so present. If your goal is to be part of this community, you have achieved that and then some. Thank you so much.
And we'll see you all at the fair.
Is there anybody that would like to say anything from the public?
Hi, everyone. My name is Jesse Bull Rice and I'd like to begin by thanking everyone for showing up and taking the time out of your day to hear me out. I, like a lot of youth today, started getting into trouble pretty early on. By the age of 12, I had already gotten arrested and put on probation. I was hanging out with the wrong crowds of people and doing a lot of stupid stuff. I didn't know it then, but I was seeking attention and guidance by anyone willing to give it. Not that I wasn't getting it at home, because I was. My mom gave me a great childhood. Anything I needed, I would have had. Maybe not everything I always wanted, but she did the very best for me. She worked two to three jobs to keep me taken care of, but for some reason, that wasn't enough for me. I kept pursuing attention from the wrong people and pretty soon, I just pushed my mom away because it felt cooler to listen and be like everyone else. As the years went by, I continued to fall deeper and deeper into a bad place. I began using drugs to be cool and it soon consumed my life. I became a person people feared instead of a person people loved. Everything about me had begun to change. I just didn't know it yet. I continued to get in trouble and had begun getting locked up and put on probation over and over. And I really started to resent authority. I rebelled against anyone who gave me rules. The older that I got, the smarter I felt. I was so convinced probation, the cops, hell, even my mom was against me. I did whatever I could not to listen to them. And instead of feeling smart, I felt dumb because all that would happen is I would keep getting in trouble and arrested more. Since I was 12, I've had about two and a half years where I wasn't on probation or in some kind of trouble. And it really started to bother me. So instead of changing my life around, I tried to find loopholes in the system. I would do the work that they wanted because I knew what they wanted to hear and see, but in reality, nothing had changed in me. I was putting on a front to try and get probation off my back and instead, I'm the reason that they stayed there. After my car accident, my eyes really got opened. It took three years to fight my case in court, but I never gave up. Everybody in jail with me told me that there was no way I would get probation, that I was for sure going to prison. And I started to believe them, but I still never gave up and it paid off. After three years of fighting, I was granted a Romero motion and eligible for probation and pretty soon, things started to look up. I was put on probation and given one last chance to turn my life around and that's what I'm doing. I have three years clean off meth. I'm actually doing the work to better myself. I spent over half my life on probation and for the first time, I finally see that they are here to help me, not hurt me. I'm accepting the help and giving them 150% in return and my life is doing a full 360. The more I put into changing myself, the more I get from it. Along the way, there was a lot of people who tried to help me and I took it as a bad thing, but now I just want to say thank you. Thank you to every probation officer, cop, judge, for believing in me and giving me a second, third, and even a fourth chance. Thank you to my mom for never giving up on her baby boy and thank you to my wife for seeing the best of me, always being in my corner. And thank you to those that wouldn't let me give up on myself, even when I would self-sabotage myself. I am so thankful and grateful for everything that has been done for me to get to where I am today. I am becoming myself again, not the person I was pretending to be, but the true person I have always been deep down, the person my mom raised me to be. If one of the biggest home burglars can change his life around, so can you. I know that there's a lot of people who want to change but are scared or don't know how or feel that they're all alone. But I promise, you're not alone. It won't be easy, but I promise it will be worth it. After half my life on probation, I can actually say I'm thankful for them, something I should have done a long time ago. Think of them as a tool in your toolkit because, believe me, they are. They're here to help you. You just got to be committed and always look forward. Put your blinders on and keep on pushing and before you know it, your whole world will be changed for the better. I just want to say thank you again for everyone here today and allowing me to share a little of myself and my story. And even if my words only help one person today, that still means we're moving in the right direction, so thank you.
Is there anyone else that needs to come up, would like to come up and say something?
I don't know. Sure, I'm not that short.
Sorry.
Good morning, guys. My name's Chance Williams and I'm not very good at this at all, but I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you guys. And specifically, you Officer Hernandez, you Officer Fields, and also you Officer Hudson because I was locked up when I, around 18, and I was facing a long time in prison and it was a hard journey for me to get to where I am today. And all of the officers that I just mentioned have been there for me through this whole path. And I'm very grateful and Officer, also Officer Nick, they've been very helpful through this journey for me. And like I said, I'm not very good at this. I don't know else to say other than I'm very great. I'm very grateful and appreciative of the help that you guys have given me and also the little bit of a push that I may have not wanted, but I definitely needed. And you guys have all been there for me to give me that little bit of a push and I'm very appreciative of that. So thank you all of you guys.
Anyone in Zoom?
I see no one in Zoom, but I do want to add something. I want to thank those that came and spoke. You are part of the reason we get up in the morning to do what we do. This is what public service is all about. Thank you.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us today.
That was a little heavier than I thought it would be.
Okay, our next item is 6.5, 9:15 a.m. Consideration of Report from Bruce Wilson, Executive Director of Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. And Bruce, do you want to come up and join us?
Come on up.
If you sit on this side, you'll be able to see the screen better. And we've got the microphone right there for you both to share. Good morning.
Good morning. Ready?
Go for it.
All right. How would I click?
Good morning, Chair Paeska, members of the board. It's good to see you again and to be back in front of you to give a report on different things, actually. I have with me here Victoria Polito, who is our supervisor for Lake County for all Workforce Investment Act, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act programs at Career Point. She will be touching on a few slides, talking about specifically the program that's available to us here at, just down by the lake here. The report I'm going to give today is a deep dive into looking at Lake County's economy, the economic engine that drives that economy, if you will. We're looking at the labor force that's fueling that economy right here at the moment, and then we look at structural things, changes, improvements that we can do by partnering with other agencies and implementing different programs that might move the needle in fueling that economy into the future. Think of it as building our logistical lines to feed the, feed our employers, if you will, and our businesses. So, quickly, a lot of the report that you have in front of you is looking at what we can do to align our talent strategies. There are a number of things we can do. Victoria's going to be giving some examples here today that are highlighted, where we talk about matching our current workforce. We just had the probation department here, and we have different programs. We really want to partner with programs such as the probation department so that we can move people from the justice system into long-term, sustainable employment. And, you know, we do that at our Career Point program for, just as an example. Addressing barriers to labor force participation for target populations, anything that might be preventing somebody from getting into the labor force. We have work experience programs, on-the-job training programs. We actually pay for tuition, books, tools, supplies, anything that might be beneficial to removing those barriers. We're providing on-ramps and bridges to high-quality career pathways, which means we have to understand and research what those career pathways are, and I want to get into that in just a moment. Aligning certificate and degree programs by working with our community colleges, understanding our industry sectors, back mapping industry needs for K-16 education, et cetera. So, I think what this is really saying, and what I'll be underscoring, is that it's a community effort to address workforce development opportunities, if you will. So, first, let's take a look at the Lake County economy. When we, in workforce development, are trying to understand, these are, understand the economy, these are the kinds of questions we're asking ourselves. Which industries have the highest concentrations of employment? Which industries are, or which jobs are growing most rapidly? Because that's where the opportunities are. Who are our top employers? What skills are in highest demand? Those are the kinds of questions that we're seeking to answer in this report. We're also trying to understand our labor force opportunities. So, how, who lives and works here, and how diverse is our population? How educated is our population for the different jobs that might require post-secondary education? Has our labor force participation changed or recovered from COVID? These are all questions that we need to understand if we're going to come up with a talent development strategy. And then I talked about looking at structural changes, the logistical things that we can do to continue building our workforce for the jobs that exist long in the future. And again, these are the types of questions we might ask ourselves. Are there skills and equity gaps? Who is underemployed and sitting on the sidelines? So, that's really addressing labor force participation. I have a graph here that's going to show our labor force participation in the last few years. What career-aligned programs are offered at the adult schools, community colleges? Again, these are structural things that if we are braiding and leveraging our resources, partnering with different community groups, we can make a difference in matching our community members with jobs that will help them sustain themselves long in the future. So, that's a goal. I think that I would like to underscore that ultimately, a community workforce strategy is really partner-based. Everybody needs to be involved. We should be asking, the Board of Supervisors, for instance, could be asking, what kinds of programs, what departments do we have that could support what these strategies are, and how might we leverage and braid those resources? For instance, we have our CalWorks programs and our Health and Human Service programs that actually do a lot to move the needle on employment. So, partnering and braiding those resources together with programs such as Victoria's reduces the cost to move people and train people in, for their future careers, but, and also results in better outcomes. So, we want to coordinate and collaborate across organizations and understand the work that cannot be accomplished in silos. That's just more expensive ultimately for the community, and it leads to far lesser outcomes. We want to follow the lead of employers, meaning we need to understand what employers need in terms of a skill set. We don't want to be wasting resources by training people for jobs that don't actually exist in our community. So, we want to have that all aligned, and that starts with having deep conversations, organized conversations, I would say, with our business communities. And then we want to focus on skills. We, there are, we tend to, in our society, drive our community members towards degree programs. Get your BA, get your AA. And I would say that most of the skills, and you'll see that, or most of the jobs in Lake County are very skill-based. So, if we can look at short-term training programs that match the skills with what the employers actually need, then I think we stand a far better chance of achieving clean outcomes, if you will. So, I'm going to come back to that because that's critical. That is the, those are the principles that I think a community needs to work on as we move in the future. So, again, economic overview, these are the things we're looking at, as I said, and let's take a look at what Lake County has. These are the top 10 industries in Lake County. We look at, you see that third column, the percent change? That's, those are indicators of how those industries are growing. So, how many more jobs will those industries create? These are projections over the course of the next several years. And you can see that some of them really stand out. Social assistance is growing by 18%. You have your hospitality growing by 12%, contractors growing by 12%. It's important also to look at what industries might be shrinking. Now, we're talking about over 20 industries in Lake County, so I only listed the top 10. So, if we went to the 20, you'll see some of those industries are shrinking. Why is that important? Because those folks can be brought into these growing industries by instituting programs, training programs, that look at transferable skill sets. So, we'll look at the transferability of current skills and see what the gap is, and if we work with our education providers, we can put together a short-term training program that bridges that gap and moves them into these growing industries. Our employers, these employers right here are struggling to find a workforce. So, I mean, those are things that a community needs to think about. If our employers and business communities struggling to find that workforce, how are we going to meet that challenge? So, that's just a look. Your report goes into more detail, and certainly, my organization can pull detailed reports in any area of this. This is a look at the top occupations and demand in Lake County. Again, we're looking at the change, we're looking at annual openings, we're looking at location quotient. Anything above a 1 is a positive location quotient, and then we're looking at median annual earnings. So, you can see towards the bottom that they're elementary school teachers, general operations managers, those are some of your higher wages. You got registered nurses, and again, I'm going to come back to that in a moment. That's doing very well at, in excess of $100,000 for median annual earnings. So, those are those better-paying occupations for sure, and it's good to see that they're on that top 10 list. In addition to just looking at data from various different sources, we're able to look and pull data from thousands of websites that, including the County of Lake's website, and we're looking at what kind of skills employers are actually looking for. And these are the skills that are showing themselves the most, and the reason why this is important is it gives you that real immediate, if you will, indication of what skills are most in demand, what occupations are most in demand. So, you can see from this list that healthcare industry is really rising to the top, if you will, which is an opportunity for our education providers, organizations such as our, our own and the Board of Supervisors to ask ourselves, do we have enough capacity in our healthcare training system to meet this need? And I, I thought I heard some comments about EMTs, for instance, and how are we going to meet those needs in the future? So, we took, taking a look at that, and we're going to move to demographics. This is really refreshing and a silver lining for Lake County, and it stands out in comparison to the rest of the four counties that the Workforce Alliance serves. Your population in Lake County is projected to grow, just as the jobs and the job opportunities are projected to grow. And it's just a question of how are we, as a community, going to sustain that? Because at the end of the day, if people don't see opportunity in a community, they will, they will move away. And let's take a look at, just to, not to beat up any other county, but if you compare, for instance, Napa County's job growth to their population growth, there's a real challenge there. The population is going down pretty dramatically while the jobs are going up, whereas Lake County has seen a net increase of workers over the last year of almost 1,000 people. Napa County has seen a net decrease of workers of almost 1,000 people. Just by example, looking at migration patterns. So, again, Lake County, it's, is, of our four counties, this is a great position to be in, that you are attracting, from my viewpoint, a future workforce. If you look at by age cohort, you can see how your population's growing where, and this is important from a workforce standpoint, because this is, these are your future workforce and your current workers, and in almost every category, we're seeing projections of higher amounts of people in each one of those areas. And again, if I were to draw a comparison, you'd see the total opposite of this in some of our other counties that are much more difficult to sustain due to cost of living, et cetera. So, again, that's good news. Of course, inside of every, inside of every silver lining is a dark cloud, and one of the challenges that Lake County has is that we need to get our labor force participation back up. So, on the far left there, you see our labor force participation, meaning the amount of people over the age of 16 that are looking for work or are currently working is about 56.5%. That dropped down to 50% and has only marginally increased. So, those folks that are sitting on the sidelines that have not gotten back into the labor force, how might we work with them as a community to give them opportunities, work experience, whatever it might need to encourage them to get back in the labor force, because there are plenty of jobs that exist? When you look at the types of jobs, this is an opportunity, but it's important to know that it's an oversupply of jobs that require post-secondary credentials, require no post-secondary credentials in Lake County. So, it's the bar that you see on each, the vertical bar on each horizontal bar is where your population is in terms of education versus the number of jobs, the orange bar, horizontal bar going to the right, that exist for that education level. So, you can see there that you'd say an oversupply of jobs require no post-secondary credentials in Lake County. So...
Supervisor Green?
Did I see 30% have high school education or better? Is that what that vertical line means?
Yes. Then we have, from a workforce standpoint, it's critically important for organizations that are trying to move people into their career field to continue working with people that might, we might get them into an entry-level job, but you can see that an entry-level job here in healthcare might be a licensed vocational nurse that we can get somebody into, but if we can keep working with that person or keep working with anybody that might hold a position such as that, the salary difference of moving them into the next rung in their career ladder. So, moving from a licensed vocational nurse to a registered nurse in Lake County will result in a $53,000 pay increase. Moving to health service management, $36,000 pay increase, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is how career pathways work, career ladders, and why we take them so seriously at the Workforce Alliance. So, ultimately, we, in the report you have there, we have a six-phased recommendations, and they follow talent traction, transferable skills, technical and certificate programs that align to where the employer needs are, information gaps that might, we might not have information that we need in order to understand the economy. We keep looking at that, and we got to have to start early, even in the elementary schools, to meet our workforce challenges. I'm not going to go into those details here today, but I want to keep working with the community, working with our community partners, working with you, the Board of Supervisors, to really see where we might implement key programs that are going, that's going to move the needle... move the needle on that structural piece that I talked about earlier. We need to figure out our logistical lines that will feed us far in the future. I'm going to stop there, and Victoria's going to talk about some of the Career Point programs that we have that match the information that I provided here. Why don't we skip over this? I will say that in the report, we talk about building the coalition, and I've said that several times, and these are the examples of partner agencies that should be a part of that coalition.
Good morning again. I'm Victoria, so I just wanted to kind of, kind of build that gap about how are we making this a possibility for people within Lake County? So again, the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay and Career Point are four counties. So we rely on our staffing and resources through the all four counties of Lake, Mendocino, Napa, and Marin. I do oversee both Lake and Mendocino County at the moment. So within our Career Point system, we have mandated partners, and this is kind of how we bridge those barriers. So a lot of our partners are EDD, Department of Rehabilitation, California Human Development, Adult Education, Public Assistance, and also Welfare to Work. So a lot of the times, as you saw, you know, sometimes our population is lacking a high school diploma. Everybody who comes to us, we try to promote, let's get education, let's get that high school diploma, so you can reach a higher wage or a better sustainable job. So we rely on all of our partner agencies to co-enroll, to share all of our resources, to make sure that our community has the best resources possible to maintain that sustainable wage for their family. So we work with all of these agencies, and they're all actually within our Career Point location at 55 First Street. Everybody is welcome to their services, as long as they maintain that eligibility for like Department of Rehab, Human Development. So there's a lot of different things that the community is eligible to that they might not be aware of. Oh, okay. So I'll go ahead and describe some of our individualized career services. So everybody who is eligible to our services is 16 or older. They basically need their right-to-work documents, so that's your I-9. Males do have to have selective service, but we provide everybody who comes to us with individualized career services. And some of those examples are being able to provide one-on-one counseling, kind of understanding that roadmap with them. So as Bruce described, we really work on pathways to employment. So my staff have a wide variety of experience of different job histories, and they bring a lot to the table that can share with our job seekers about how to get into a certain path. My background is public safety and law enforcement, so that, you know, I'm able to help those individuals who come through our door seeking that. I have an individual who has an education and training as a teacher. So we're able to bring those to the community and understand that pathway. We do provide everybody with one-on-one job search, understanding what they're looking for, and how can we meet that goal. We try to not make everybody that cookie cutter and put them in the job that they're not going to be happy with, but we really want them to be knowing that the job they're going to work in is what they're going to be excited about, going to be able to provide to their family, and just know that there's a career path for them. We do help with workshops, resume building, different types of things, just for basic foundation of going to work. We also can provide supportive services. So we do provide training assistance. You know, it was noted for public safety, there might be a lack of individuals in that field. If there is, for any reason, somebody feels that they don't have, you know, the monetary ability to do that, you know, please reach out to Career Point. You know, there are programs such as paramedic and fire and law enforcement that we are eligible to pay for. So it, we really try to make sure that money is not a barrier to somebody to getting a job. There are, of course, eligibility to it, but we want to make sure that that is attainable by people. And most of Lake County do reach our, our criteria to be able to pay for training. So those are, you know, some points that can be really helpful just within anything. We really focus on the different certificates and just getting people in work as soon as possible. Our goal is within six months, people can have a good, sustainable wage, and then we can work with them even a year later on how can we promote to a different job. We do provide retention services for a year after gaining employment to make sure that things are working smoothly. Sorry for the, a little, the writing's a little bit off. But we do provide some assistance. We do help businesses in our area and other training providers to get people through training. So we help with like an earn and learn program. We have, we partner with apprenticeships, vocational training, and certifications. So currently, we are partnering with Lake County Office of Ed, that's a huge one. We are able to pay for a lot of the medical assistance and CNAs. So that is a huge need for our community in Lake County, and that's just one way how Career Point's kind of making that a possibility for everybody. We're getting people through, and we're helping them with jobs after their training. Another need that we assist with in Lake County is truck drivers. Whether that be Class A or Class B, we sponsor a lot of those programs as a high demand. So we've also gone pretty digital. Since December, we had a mobile app go live that really brings a little bit more tech to our customers. That way, they can reach us virtually, so they can learn about our services, register for workshops. We give everybody free access to the LinkedIn Learning site. They can take career personality assessments, view our upcoming events. We do have a hiring event coming up in August for Adventist Health. And also, they can get direct access to CalJobs. We do have a job board on there of all of the job openings within Lake County as our business services find out what those jobs are. And then we also discussed all of the different training providers that we might be working with, but it's not the end of training providers. All of those, there's a few thousand on CalJobs that are available to people. So we kind of just go from there, and our list of those providers keep adding. And they're able to book appointments directly with staff through the app as well. So we do have some special grants that the Workforce Alliance is always searching for and promoting for us. So this one coming up is specifically helping Lake County at the moment. So this grant allows us to hire individuals. We're trying to get the wage higher than 19, but right now, it's 19 an hour, and it's cleaning up the storm damage from January storms. So we are going to be working with the County of, sorry, County of Lake, the City of Clear Lake, and City of Lakeport. Those are different agencies that we are currently working with, and we'll be partnering to make sure that everything is cleaned up. They will be removing debris, trash, different bushes, trees, et cetera. We are doing the same in our other three counties as well. And some other special grants that I didn't note that will be coming up, that we'll be working with probation on, hopefully, is we have a prison-to-employment grant coming, where it is special just for those individuals who have any type of criminal justice background that might need some additional assistance. That grant is specifically for those individuals. We also have a few training grants where we can, right now, provide additional support for people looking for healthcare, truck driving, and construction jobs. And so we're constantly looking for grants that help our industries grow and bring people to the workforce. So there's different things that are going to evolve and come throughout the years. And then we are, like I said, at 55 First Street, we're there Monday through Friday, but I also have staff on the Clear Lake campus every Tuesday. So we partner a lot with them to make ourselves accessible to that side of the lake and the citizens there. So if there's any questions, you can always reach out to us at any time.
Where are these hours posted for the public?
So they are on, if you Google Career Point Lake, they are there. We do close from 12 to 1, but we are open every day. That is not a federal holiday.
Okay, great.
So when it comes to addressing the workforce challenge, you can see that the Workforce Alliance and the Career Point system is, I was going to say, when it comes to working towards the workforce challenge, you can see that the Workforce Alliance and Career Point Lake are totally engaged in trying to meet those needs and mitigate those challenges. I would encourage the Board of Supervisors, if you're doing newsletters, getting information out about different programs that you, we'll feed you with the information that you might need to let the community know about, for instance, the hours, but we are always looking for more people to help.
Questions? Ask Victoria, well?
Did you have your pen up? Supervisor, spot you.
Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of notes from some of the slides that were up there. You mentioned jobs creation keeping up with population growth. I know here in Lake County, I'm just going to split it at 50, I don't have the exact numbers, but a lot of us commute to work outside of the county. So for every two new people, they may only take up one job in the area. So I'm trying to figure out, how do we, does that mean we get people coming in from out of county to work here to fill up those jobs that are going to be available? Or are we going to remain vacant in those job positions and hope that eventually we can fill them? That's just something that I think we need to look at and not assume that it's automatically going to fill in, that there might be some extra work needed. And I remember that from the Dr. Ayler Report for the number of people that travel out of county every single day to go to work. We talked about the, there was a comment about 30% high school diploma. I don't think that's correct. That, that one, I think we're at, we're actually higher than the average of state of California. I don't know what the number is. I think it's in the high 80s or low 90s. But 30% might just be AA plus bachelor's, because I know even in the overall county, we're not at 20% for a bachelor's degree. I know City of Clear Lake's like 8%, the overall county was 16 last I checked on our census. So just wanted to clarify that, that more than 30% of our community has a high school diploma. That is, that was not a good number. So I wanted to make sure and correct that. Just to speak on the EMT paramedic, just to see how we can possibly work. I know that I had a conversation with community colleges, some high school districts, or some high school districts, some local school districts. We are attempting, nothing has been finalized, to try and bring those EMT courses to the high school campuses, as we have a captive audience. And if we can get those senior students, as they turn 18, to be done with their EMT courses, they can go ahead and pass the state test, and then they can go ahead and start working, and it's actually decent pay. I don't know what it starts at, I think it's either between $40,000 and $50,000, but it's decent pay to start as an EMT, and it opens up so many more doors to any healthcare, as you mentioned as well, climbing up the rungs of the ladder. So I wanted to kind of share that that's some of the work that we're doing to try and expand the opportunities to fill in those needs. Again, I appreciate the presentation, and I hope that my comments here don't make things awkward, but I didn't get anything of what has been done. I see a lot of what wants to be done. I know that you guys kind of left Napa. Napa was kind of like the lead agency, there was some changes that needed to be done in Workforce Alliance, but I didn't receive any numbers. How many people are you serving? How many people have gotten jobs? How many people have you helped pay for school? I feel like those numbers matter to me a whole lot more than just the ideas or the prospect of things. And so I'm, I'm leaving here needing a whole lot more information than what I walked into, because I'd love, I love the idea of things, but I want to know what is working for us that you've been doing. And I'll also leave it with this, there needs to be a tighter relationship, at least with the community colleges. I know I used to work on the community college campus, and I'm not going to put my personal thing in there, but I know that it was a struggle to communicate and work together and collaborate. We got to figure out how to make that happen. I know I just spoke with one of the deans who has not met with you and has been there for more than six months. And so we need to build those relationships, because those, that is the central place that people are going to go. As far as I'm concerned, colleges, anything past high school, if you want to go to be a police officer, you got to go to police academy. I consider that same thing as going to school and getting an education in the field that you want to get trained into. So whether that turns into a bachelor's, a certificate, or just a license to do a job, it's post-high school education, and we just need to focus on making sure people, whatever their goals are, have access to those things. And that's our central place in our community. We don't have the universities accessible here, they can be through online, but we have to have a tighter relationship with our community colleges. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Would you like me to respond to that?
You sure can. You're here. Great. Well, I don't disagree with anything you said. I think that's really good feedback and gives us focus. I will say that at the Workforce Development Board level, we do have a seat at the Board for Community College. So we are, I think that if there's somebody over there at the college that we haven't spoken to, you know, I'd like to get their name and reach out to them. And I think you're right, we need to align our programs, as I stated here. As far as, I can't remember everything you said, there was a lot there, so I'm going to, I'm going to give it my best shot.
I know I spoke about the lack of stats.
Yeah. Maybe Victoria might be able to off her hand, or off her head, talk about some of the things that we've been doing. We do publish a report, a report card that we give to our governing board at their quarterly meetings. So we are always looking at stats. We're looking at where people are entering our program for, from, how many people are walking through the doors, how many people are accessing Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act programs. We would like to, because Career Point is a partnership, get better at providing stats as to of the people that walk through our doors, how many are accessing CalWorks programs versus EDD programs. So if we had 1,000 people walk through our doors, we are able to give very specific information about who entered the WIOA program, and I will follow up with this meeting with getting that information to you by the end of the week, for sure, because we do track that information, just didn't make it a part of this presentation today. Victoria just said, put a marker, if you, if you know them offhand, though, I think it'd be good to share. As far as migration, inter-county migrate, that's pretty typical, because economies are regional, but that's also the challenge for Lake County. So how might you have a workforce, which is my point? How might you look to support the economy in order to keep that workforce here? What kind of opportunities might you have for your residents that is going to keep them from commuting or whatnot? And I will say, it's even getting more challenging on that front. Somebody from Lake County can work for an employer in San Diego because of the, how much our employers across the nation have embraced remote work. So that is a challenge that we need to keep talking about, keep talking about with our community college, and keep talking about with you as we move forward. So I, again, what I wanted to express and underscore is that this is a conversation that we need to all be at the table for in order to move the needle. Our economic development partners have a lot of, a big voice in that particular subject as well. What part did I miss?
I don't know, I said a lot.
Okay. But definitely, I will lean on you, Supervisor, to make that connection with any member of the college that we have not spoken to. We have a wealth of information, and our goal is to align the talent development opportunities to the jobs that actually exist. And I think we have a lot to offer there to the college.
I just have a couple of follow-ups. Do you have two seats for Community College, or just one? Because we have two separate ones, and I want to make sure that both are working for the community as best as they can with you, rather than one being amplified and the other one being left behind.
Well, I, yeah, we have, at our advisory, each county has an advisory committee, if you will, because we want to keep our hand on the pulse of what's important in Lake County. And there are no limits to that. If there's a dean over there that can give their time to participate with other community partners on this subject, we want to hear from that dean. That's the table by which we can have that conversation. On the full Workforce Development Board, we have 20 seats, and one of those 20, by law, has to be a community college, representing the community college voice from a regional The, yeah, so I think that answers your question.
And then my last comment is something that I hope still exists, and something that we can, excuse the term, but exploit to the best of our advantage. You had a program where you paid 50% of the salaries for kind of like an internship or training. training program. I still feel like that is probably one of the greatest programs that we can try and bolster up and make available for a wide variety of things within the context of the program. By working with our community colleges, people that are slowly getting to their degree, if we can start getting them in the workforce and helping our employers by paying that 50% of the salaries, I just, it sounds like it still exists and I'd love to see what the numbers are as far as how that's been utilized and how we can increase those numbers to give a benefit to our employers and give those people who are looking to be employed a step up in getting employed.
I can speak to some of those, those topics. So like Bruce said, we do have a dashboard that comes out every quarter. So the main part of the dashboard really covers WIWA services. So in the last year for fiscal year, we did finish the year with an OJT, which is where we paid actually 90% of a wage due to a waiver that we received to be able to pay for small businesses. We were able to reimburse at a 90% rate. If they are over 50 employees, that's where it's the 50%. So those are opportunities that are still available. We finished the year with nine WEXs, so those are the same type of thing, but for our youth program, which is age, all of these kids were 18 to 24. So they were all placed in different businesses, learning kind of the trade, and they were all actually hired on after with that company. Each one received a full-time employment. So that's just kind of what WIWA was able to do. Now, the other partners within Career Point do have the same type of program. And so that's where Bruce is trying to say, we want those statistics as well. How much are we able to provide back? But I can only speak to the WIWA side. We did have 17 individuals in training, so a lot of those, again, were CNAs, medical assistants, truck drivers. We do have dental assistants, phlebotomists, a lot of different trades that we're able to assist with. So with, when it comes to paying for on-the-job training or training dollars, it's one bucket for us. So we, in Lake County, we are heavily on a training. That's what people come to us for, is to go to training. So we would love to see how we can make more businesses part of our services and try to see where we can work that out, whether it's putting through training and assisting with a job after.
Thank you.
One last thing I didn't touch on is the population and education level, so I'm going to follow up on that. Our information comes from data, federal data sources. So as people get their degrees and hold their degrees and that gets fed into a system which we're able to draw from, but I want to make sure that we're talking about the same denominator, if this, it just says popul, the population at that educational level and make sure that we're not misreading that. I'll follow up.
So a while back, Supervisor, Vice Chair Simon and I saw the presentation with Marin County and the community college with the firefighter program. And it is something that we both want to see here with maybe a more, a focus on fuels management. That is something that we're, we're struggling with, with that capacity here. And so I know we were just showing your top 10 industries, but definitely climate-related professions and that industry is needed here. And so we'd both like to see some more programs developed in that area.
Right. And one thing immediately that we can do is in that Marin County program, what we did was participate in the funding of the curriculum for developing firefighters. So we can make that available immediately with regard to what Marin County did. And it was, it's intended to be replicable, if you will. Whether or not, I think what we could also do is set up some conversations between Marin County stakeholders and Lake County stakeholders on how you might replicate that in Lake County if stakeholders decided to go in that direction.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate this, appreciate the slide deck. I want to point out to those watching, Posted With the Agenda was this hard copy report. I think the slide deck kind of repurposes some of that. So this report by Lightcast was done for Workforce Alliance. So if you haven't had a chance, it is online. And if this slide deck was sobering, this report just kind of adds fuel to that fire for me. Whether it's 30% high school graduate or 50%, it's just that the disparity in education levels here in this county is striking. The amount of poverty is striking. We're becoming a bedroom community for workers in Sonoma and Mendocino and Napa County. We can't house our own workers to the extent they do live here and they have kids. What, 20% of their income goes to childcare, assuming they can find it? This is, this is a bad news bearer of a report and it's no offense to anybody, you're highlighting the reality of what it is. So just to backtrack a little bit for myself, I, last time I stumbled into Career Point, several job gaps ago, I'm an old guy, I was looking for the unemployment department. So I think the part of this may be a branding issue for me, you know, how many people know Career Point is the old unemployment department? How many know, people know you're state-funded, not just to provide boots on the ground at our office here in Lakeport, but you do dovetail with CalJobs and all these other job training programs you mentioned. I don't know, just because I didn't know for a fact, again, several years ago when I was job gapping, just how central your office is to the state's efforts to get people employed here. So number one, just thank you for being here, but there may be people like myself who are still kind of playing catch-up to the idea that we even have Career Points here in Lake County and what your exact role is. So appreciate all the good information in this report. Certainly there's anything we can do to support your mission and if there's, we can help you connect some of the dots that you've mentioned that you don't have fully realized. But if I remember right, you probably aren't fully staffed either, you're probably struggling to fill your own positions. You're wearing two counties, right? So, and I just don't know what to do with this, other than wish you well, but it kind of highlights what we've seen in other reports, that the, you know, Lake County is the poster child for your income, income disparity. And we can talk about equity all we want, but if we can't get people out of high school, if we can't get people basic job training, if we can't get people housing, the biggest job growth highlighted in the slide deck and in this report is minimum wage jobs. You know, what, what good is it to have 18% growth pattern for a job that doesn't turn 30K a year? Who can live on that? So thank you for highlighting what COVID has brought us, what remote work has brought us, what economic pressure from our neighbors in the North Bay. It's still kind of odd to think of Lake County as a North Bay county, but the market dynamics, the employment dynamics, the fact that we're getting good news at the national level that we're down to 3.6% employment, what we're, what, double that here? It's all very concerning and I just don't know how to process it. So if I can leave it at this, I hope we can take a meeting or two afterwards, just so I can catch up with the hard work you're doing. This is a great report, but I need to know more. Thank you.
Just a reminder that Vice Chair Simon and I sit on the Workforce Alliance board.
Did you have a response Supervisor Swatier?
I'll let Supervisor Crandall go first.
And so I just, I don't know how far off this might be, but you did mention training. One of the things that's often mentioned, I know, sorry, but the, I know with the fire chief, one of the things that he comes to a lot of my town halls, we have a lot of issues, as you know, with retention and recruiting. But one of the things that are commonly stated is that, and this is the Chief Seansio's words, a word like the minor leagues of the firefighting and EMT industry, or whatever you want to call it, profession. And so they'll come here for a couple of years, get the training and go to a different area that can pay more. A lot of counties that are also in collaboration with Lake County and this JPA, whether it be Marin, Sonoma, or Napa. I'm pretty, I know and heard the same thing in regards to the situation with the Sheriff's Department, with the deputies. And what you have to really think about is in each area, so like whether it be fire, EMT, deputies, et cetera, they do learn a lot more here and get a lot of experience. The deputies have to become correction facility officers, dispatch. They also do a lot more when it comes to, you know, when they actual patrol. So when they do, and if they do decide to leave, they have all of that knowledge, same with the fire and EMTs. What was explained to me is that when someone leaves here, they have all of this different experience with firefighting and fuels and all of these other things that they don't get when they go to Napa or to, you know, Sonoma or even the Bay Area. So they go in there just kind of becoming a one-trick pony, whereas here, you get all the tools, you kind of paid a little bit for the time being, but once you move on, you're making triple or double. And you're also more of an asset, if you think about it, because you have all of that on your tool belt. And I'll have to say the same thing with the county, you have to do a lot more different positions. I know that some of our directors have to do their deputy positions because they can't recruit, same thing with others. So we're like a training ground and I think maybe we need to embrace that and just say, like the chief said, we're like the minor leagues. And so how do we implement that as to saying, hey, Lake County's a training ground, we understand it, so how can we funnel them through? So we always have our, you know, positions always kind of somewhat filled or something like that. I don't know, I'm just throwing an idea out there. So, because I've heard it, it's not my idea, the chief brought it up. So I liked it and I just figured I'd say it, so.
Well, I think, just to respond to both comments, Supervisor Green, I think you're right, this was intended to be a very data-based look at what's actually happening. If I could give any sense of hope is that we did lay out several different strategies that can be added on to, that at least the Workforce Alliance is focused on things that we can do in that, in those, that six-phase strategy piece. So I would love to have the opportunity to sit down with you and talk in more detail because they're one or sent, two-sentence things that are hard to grasp, but those are the things that we are, we think we can move the needle on. And I think that there is a great deal of hope. A lot of, for instance, entry-level jobs, but when you think about entry-level jobs being a part of a career pathway and you can move up and through that career pathway, then you can reach sustainable opportunities in our community. Lake County also has a much, a far, much lesser cost of living index and it's a certain quality of life that some of the other counties in California don't offer. And there's some opportunities in promoting what Lake County is. And there's a lot of people that want to be here for that. There's a lot of people that, just looking at data, that are moving to Lake County. The challenge is how you keep them, as Supervisor Crandall just hit on. So how do we keep them in Lake County filling these jobs? And that's, I, the reason why there are so many solutions in this report is that, our strategies in this report is because there's no magic pill, if you, if you will. There's, we have to work on all of these things and we're one organization. So that's why I stress, how do we do an audit of resource, employment and training resources in this community and what opportunities might we have to braid those resources to start addressing some of the challenges that we're seeing in the fire service industry and across many different industries. But entry-level jobs is an asset from the standpoint, you got to stick with them and move them through their career pathway.
Supervisor Swatier?
Yeah, I feel the need to correct Supervisor Green. He threw out some numbers that are, again, it's, you said 30 or 50% for high school graduation rate. And I just, we have to prop up and highlight what we do right and work to fix the challenges in front of us, not to desecate our county and words from this dais matter. On the average for the state of California, 84.2% high school graduates for 25 years and up. In this county of Lake, it is 87, 86.6%. We are doing better than the average of California. In May of 2023, unemployment in California was 4.5 and Lake County was 5.5, not double. Please watch those numbers. It's important not to let people think that we're in a specific position that we're not. We need to know the facts and we need, we need to know and recognize the challenges and step up to it, but not throw our county on the ground. So needed to fix that. And when's the next time we see you guys? I'd love to talk about how we follow up with you. I know we have the committee and I don't want to get involved in that level of work, but are we doing this annually? It's been a while since we've seen you, Bruce. Just kind of wanted to check in when we can get another report and see the progress we're making and maybe see what pivots we need to look at or what we would like to suggest. Just kind of curious about that.
Right. Well, certainly I will meet with you, anybody here one-on-one at any point. It's just a matter of scheduling a time to meet and having that conversation. So I'm, I'm always available on that front. As far as presenting to the Board of Supervisors, anytime I would get a request, I would be happy to schedule that at any point, whether it be quarterly or annually. I think we've been striving for annual presentations to the Board of Supervisors, but if there's something specific that we can speak to and you would like me to speak to you as a board, I'm happy to do that. Certainly as well, all of our meetings are open to the public and you can participate in that way as well. So it's a very inclusive process to get your viewpoints heard and addressed and focused on. So I would, I would just say that.
I wanted to touch on that too. So I spend probably half my time really trying to educate the communities of Lake and Mendocino about Career Point, because, you know, there have been some changes throughout the last couple of years. So I really want to make sure that if there's anybody in the community interested in learning about Career Point and all of our partnerships, because I don't focus on just WIWA. I want the community to know that there's so many other organizations a part of our umbrella, not just WIWA, because I think every year we go through so much money unclaimed and resources not tapped into. And that's when we're going to be successful is when, again, people are working together. So I am always available to come to any organization, to any meeting, as well as like Bruce, to give any type of speech on what we do and also just the updates that are coming, because we do have new grants that I briefly touched on that constantly come through, you know, our hands. And we want to make sure that we're utilizing those funds. We don't like to give money back. So we want to make sure that people are knowledgeable about what we can do, because we're really available to everybody.
Victoria, would you like to do a presentation that's a deeper dive into what WellPoint offers locally?
Yeah, I certainly can.
So maybe we could offset our annual meeting with Bruce and do every six months in the winter, maybe January, have a follow-up with you and we can
Yeah, definitely.
More about that. Okay.
That sounds good.
I do have, kind of to touch on, at least the community college. I work very closely with the Clear Lake campus as well as Mendocino College. When it comes to the Lakeport campus, we're usually more on the Mendocino side, working with that staff. But we do, I have a very close relationship with both, both colleges, if that helps.
Yeah, it would be great to invite them to that presentation and maybe some of our other educators countywide.
Perfect.
At some level of success, if you're part of any other groups, whether it be a rotary or anything where people are gathering, these are the folks that could really help amplify the message that we're trying to get out. So appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Okay, Supervisor Green?
Just one last thing, I want to acknowledge the comments of my colleague. That slide was still very disturbing, I think one possible, as we do some follow-up. If 30% of the workforce present in Lake County has a high school education, but we have a much higher graduation rate overall, seems more than likely that a good portion of our high school educated population is leaving Lake County and thus not entering the, the workforce. Or they're present and with a higher level of education and they're not present in the workforce. So there may be, both stats may be accurate. I am interested in some follow-up on that. Don't mean to denigrate anything, but one, our workforce reentry, as noted, is well below where we need to be for COVID. And that workforce we do have present in the workplace is not, got a lot of education past high school. So, thank you.
Also, again, I'm going to follow up on that, but it's not, the way I'm reading this, just to be clear, is not of the entire population, how many have, it's how many have just a high school diploma, for instance, or just an AA degree or have just finished. It's not, anybody with a BA obviously has a high school diploma as well, so that becomes cumulative.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for the public. Okay, I'm going to open it up for the public, do we have any public comment in the room? Come on up.
My name is Joan Moss, I'm glad to meet you. I'm a part-time student at Mendocino College. I want to meet with you and consult with you and volunteer for your position. I want to know if you are on probation, if you can still qualify for a college grant. I know that a lot of people have a lot of desires and a lot of ambition, and they have a drug problem or a alcohol problem, and does that preclude them from going to school or getting money? There's a lot of questions I have. I am on Wildcat Road, I see a lot of people, I drink a lot of coffee, but I do have a bachelor's degree, and I used to teach beginning guitar, I loved it. But now, in order to qualify to apply for a job for beginning guitar, I need to have all my transcripts from all my schools and make a packet, and I don't have the skills. I have computer skills, I can write a story, but I have skills I need to contact all the schools I've ever been to and get a packet that's this thick for a job that might be one or two hours a week. Even though I have a Bachelor of Education, I'm a published writer, but I'm entering the workforce after not being able to because of the pandemic. Thank you, and thank you for not telling me I'm off the subject. Bye.
Thank you, Joan. Do you want to respond?
I'll go first. I want to stress and underscore that the programs that Victoria mentioned are specifically for people that have barriers to employment. Where, in order to qualify for our program, you usually have to make meet income eligibility and other eligibility requirements. So, and we even are about, we're hopeful that we're going to get a new, what we call Prison-to-Employment Grant from the state of California, where we'll specifically be able to help and partner with probation departments to move people from reentry into sustainable careers. As far as who we send into training, training is the most expensive service we offer, it's not cheap to provide these programs, and what we need to do is make sure that somebody's going to sit through a six-month training, for instance. If somebody has the skill sets and the interest and the aptitude to go through an HVAC training, that's a well-paying job, we want them to do that, we just need to make sure that they're going to follow it through.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Anyone in the Zoom room?
No hands.
You want to come on up? We've got some people in the chambers.
Just adding on to the subject of eligibilities, I was just curious about who you knew were certain groups that may have fallen through the cracks, or if you were able to serve all populations, but if you noticed any groups that you need to particularly reach out to to make use of these programs.
So when we, mainly our Lake population has been really good to come to Career Point directly. In the last year, my staff haven't done so much outreach, they have so many people coming to all of the other services within our community, and so we've kind of been able to help as people are coming through the door, they're coming through quite quickly. But we serve, I mean, anybody who is considered low-income, whether they are on services or not, those are kind of the main priority services. We serve anybody, so we have different levels of service. Anybody in the community is eligible for services, so whether that's just job search, resume writing, workshops, that's open to the public, no matter what age, income level, things like that. When it comes to more, having to spend a dollar, whether that's training, we have to focus on more of a priority of service. And so those are set by the governor and what we're able to do, and so with that population, those are anybody who is, again, considered low-income, anybody who is a veteran or a spouse of a veteran, Native American, but then we do have special grants for people with more barriers, and also we serve dislocated workers, that's kind of a different grant. So anybody who's been laid off, business closure, things like that. But we are open to the public, no matter what you're looking for, it's just when we need a little bit more individualized, we take that extra look at eligibility.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Just say, as far as target groups go, we do specifically look at untapped labor pools, so people with disabilities, veterans, our younger populations, those are the folks that we are trying to reach, and those are the folks we're trying to work with businesses, employers, to give a chance to if they're going to solve their workforce challenges.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Michael Wagner. I just wanted to come up and highlight a couple of different things. It looks like, you know, as Mr. Green pointed out, the report itself is rough, right? And we can see you guys have a number of different solutions or ways that you're looking at increasing or bettering the development of the county itself, or the jobs that are in the county, instead of looking at all the aspects that maybe could be changed or different. I think looking at completely new ideas might be beneficial. When we look at basically healthcare at our highest best mover at 18%, that's also hugely based on just the numbers of baby boomers, right? So the nursing and staff that's going to take care of that older population will eventually run out, right? So looking far enough ahead that we don't do something just now that doesn't address the bigger issues, which would be perhaps looking at some of the things like Bruno had brought up for building small farms, developing the area and the space that we have. The one thing that we do have probably more than any other county is developable agricultural areas, and not just doing the key essential or the typical development, but looking at the things, whether it's use of technology or education, how do we develop those different agricultural industries in a way that's more diverse? Would also allow us a longer point or a further point to get to while developing the entirety of the area, including having staff or workers that are in the area. So just a suggestion. Lastly, how does, or how do the fire departments districts work directly with you guys? Is there somebody who does that specifically? Should there be somebody that is there overseeing, just to make sure that these things do happen and there is follow-through, not from lack of caring, but probably lack of just resources, people, fingers, phone calls? So, for dialing, people used to dial, now you tell your phone who to call, right? So I don't know if it's an appropriate time to answer those questions, but I did want to present them. Thank you.
Offer that I'm, again, I'm happy to meet with anybody and look at different innovative strategies that will address workforce challenges, so maybe we can share information after the As far as these, this is not an exhaustive list, we're not just focused on this. We're looking at all things that will move the needle on things. We understand that this is going to be a multifaceted approach, and different partners and different organizations have different things to bring to the table. It's just, the challenge for us is braiding those resources, and there are some low-hanging fruit to make sure that simple organizations are talking to begin with, and that's, again, what we stressed in the report. I think the report does specifically talk about agricultural support opportunities and the concentrations of employment. It's one of the biggest opportunities, as you mentioned, for Lake County, so taking a deeper dive at those agricultural support areas is, I agree with you, is something that we need to look at to see if there's more we can do. And when I say "we," I'm not just talking about the Workforce Alliance, I'm talking about all of us, because everybody has some resource to put on the table, and it's not worth moving on anything if you're depending on just one organization to do it, because we don't have enough resource to do it just by ourselves. So it's where can we find agreement on these things that we're going to choose to move forward on together.
Just a quick response to that, I think if I remember correct, on the report, the agricultural support, or the agricultural increase anticipated is like 4%, which was much lower than the rest, but that's always flexible, right? But also just to speak on the nursing and healthcare stuff, I know that we just got a report from AAA, the Area Agency for Aging, that we anticipate a 20% increase in seniors over the next 30 years. Well, that's, if we're doing a 30-year career pathway, I think that's definitely looking in the long term, we can't go too far out. Technology 30 years ago was not exactly what we have in our hands today, but I would suspect that healthcare will remain a strong contender for being in the top 10 pretty consistently in the next couple of decades.
Are you trying to come up here? No, okay. All right, is there anyone else in the chambers? And we have someone in Zoom?
Yes, we have Crystal Marketan.
Okay, Director Marketan?
Crystal Marketan, Director of the Department of Social Services. I'd like to think the Workforce Alliance for the report, I did read it yesterday, and I just want to call attention to the fact that it really does underscore the report, social services during budget hiring, that we are competing with-
We lost your microphone for a minute there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, that we are a training ground, and this applies to all departments, and I just hope that the board, through that lens, reading this report, I feel like we need to act, to stop what's really, essentially, we're losing trained staff, and over time, you know, that level of experience that you would acquire when people stay with an organization, it won't be here. And, I mean, it's already, at some level, you know, getting to that point, but I just found that this report really underscored what my-
We lost a little bit of what you said, but I think we got the gist of it, and thank you for your comments. Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Is there anything further? If not, thank you for your presentation today. And we will take a short break, we will come back, what time, 10:52, 10:52, it'll take a little longer than five minutes. Welcome back. Our 6.6, 9:45 a.m., item AB481, Sheriff, Lake County Sheriff's Annual Military Equipment Report, and we've got Sheriff Howe and Lieutenant Bingham, come on up.
Good morning, Chair Piska and Board, Lake County Sheriff Rob Howe. So we're doing our Lake County Sheriff's Annual Military Equipment Report. This is a function in our department that Lieutenant Bingham's handled for a couple of years, so I'll be passing it on to him to give you the report.
Good morning, Board. As you can recall, those that were on the board last year, we brought the military equipment report to you and had the ordinance signed last year, ordinance 3123, and under California Government Code 770, it requires that we do an annual report and bring the military equipment annual report back to the board for renewal of the ordinance under 7071 E1 of the California Government Code. So just going to do a brief overview of the ordinance. So the ordinance requires that we have a public meeting with the community, which we had on July 6th of this year. We presented the annual equipment, military equipment report at that meeting. We've also had the report posted on the Sheriff's Office website for over 30 days now, available to the community. It covers basically the possession, use, training, fiscal impact, and any future purchases of equipment identified as military equipment by the Sheriff's Office. During this fiscal year, our fiscal impact to the Sheriff's Office budget was approximately $20,140. That, that's the ordinance, and then this is our breakdown of our fiscal impact for each piece of military equipment, or equipment that is identified as military equipment by the state of California. A lot of these, as you can see, are in approximates, some of these are difficult to come to an exact number down to the penny, simply because the many moving parts that are required for tracking. You can see with the I-Robot 510 there, a lot of that is training and maintenance, so to identify training, to identify which deputy trained on this, what pay scale they're at, a deputy one, a deputy two, a sergeant, and their ad pays, and so on and so forth, to come to an exact dollar amount is, would require an exorbitant amount of staff time. So a lot of that, when there's approximates, that is including trainings that are involved in there as far as deputy wages, either straight time or overtime wages for that. And again, the overall fiscal impact of the Sheriff's Office budgets was $20,140 for maintenance, training, and then deployment and use of the military equipment. We go to the page two here, you can see some of that, when we're talking about the use, we have the CTS-45 Impact Projectile, that's a 12-gauge, less-than-lethal round. We have 36 rounds of those that were used, and that was reused for training. We had no deployments during the last year of those rounds for any type of uses of force or deployments during use of force incidents. That's also where you can see on the fiscal impact, a lot of the rounds, the CTS OC and CS, chemical munitions, we had zero deployments last year. During the last fiscal year, we did obtain one additional piece of military equipment, that was an additional I-Robot 510, which we obtained from the Hayward Police Department as a replacement for our previous 510, which was damaged and unreparable. We brought that to the board and got the board approval for obtaining that robot from the Hayward Police Department. During this fiscal year, we've had no complaints from the community, no concerns, and we have identified no policy violations with the use of the military equipment. Or your guys' knowledge, just so you know, we have 57 categories of military equipment, which are listed in the annual report, and that were part of the presentation that brought to you. The one thing that we did add to our military equipment list this year are the rifles that are carried by our patrol deputies. Under the government code, they are listed as a standard-issue piece of equipment, and not at this time required to be added to the military equipment list. However, we know there is legislation in the state of California to make them part of the military equipment list, so out of an interest of transparency with the board and our community, we went ahead and added them to our military equipment list this year, knowing that that is probably what the state of California is going to do in their legislation. So we just added them to the list this year. And that pretty much wraps up my presentation on the equipment list and the fiscal impact, and obviously, any questions that the board may have as to type of equipment and the usage of it.
So last year, the report was a lot longer, I think it was the first time?
Yes, it was the first time, and it was an actual presentation of each piece of equipment and why we have it and what we use it for, and in the interest of the board's time. We do have that PowerPoint presentation, which is part of our website and is available to the community, or the board if you'd like to see it again.
I think I'm okay with it, but there was, I think, last year we talked a lot about expired munition, was there?
Yes, there were some-
And so it had to be disposed of?
Yes. We also have expired munitions listed on this. It would be difficult to go through all 57 pages and find them, but we still track expired munitions, and we keep them and retain them, even though we cannot use them for real-world deployments, if you want to use that term. We do retain them because of the cost for them for training purposes. We do retain them because of the cost for them for training purposes. For example, some of the CTS OC and CS munitions that we have, they can range anywhere from $36 to $85, depending on the type of munition. So once they become expired, they have an approximate shelf life of about five years. We retain them and use them internally for training, so we're lessening that fiscal impact to the Sheriff's Office.
Okay. Supervisor Spatia?
Thank you for the report. A quick question for you, drones, does that fall under military equipment?
That is a question that I don't, as I sit in front of you, have that answer to. I believe the answer is yes, but I don't want to be 100% without reviewing the government code again, it's rather lengthy, but I believe they do, yes.
And I just came up with the question, because I see Director Turner is here, and her staff has come to us talking about that, and wondering if it's in a different department, does it still have to be identified by your department as a military equipment, or does it separate itself?
It separates itself. It would be incumbent upon them to have that listed in their department. But I can check into that and work with CDD and provide that information to them. Again, I'm not 100% sure that drones fall underneath that, I believe they do, but I'd have to do some research on that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the report. Just a process question. So the staff report mentioned the report, and then some renewal of the original ordinance and stuff like that. So I didn't see a resolution for a renewal, I didn't see anything in the original ordinance regarding renewal. So I think the report's as fine as far as it goes, but if there's any findings or extension or renewal of the ordinance, I didn't see that in a recommended action, so.
Yes, the government code, like I said, 7071 E1 does require the board supervisors to annually review the military equipment annual report by the Sheriff's Office, and then vote to renew the ordinance.
And looking at county council, then, can we just up and vote to renew an ordinance without having it presented? Would it come in the form of a resolution, or how would that work?
Under the language of the cited government code section, it would be by vote. So as far as the renewal of the ordinance, so as Lieutenant Bingham has stated, under Sub E of 7071, governing body shall review any ordinance it has adopted pursuant to the section, approving the funding, approving the funding acquisition or use of military equipment at least annually, and subject to paragraph, paragraph two, the one below it, vote on whether to renew the ordinance at a regular meeting held pursuant to the Brown Act.
So again, do we need a resolution? And I didn't see the vote to extend as a recommended action on the staff report.
Sorry, what was the question again, Supervisor Green?
I acknowledge what you read in the government code, I just don't have before us today either a resolution that would give us a roll-call vote to extend this ordinance, and I don't know for a fact that we can just take a vote on the fly without a recommended action or a piece of paper to hang that vote on. I mean, if you say we can, we can, I just don't know that.
And it will be reflected also as in the board minutes, as well, the vote would.
Any comments from the public? Do we have anyone in the Zoom room?
Hold on, we're in the shared screen still. No hands on Zoom.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board for action. Yes? Approve?
Do we approve the, to renew the ordinance and as provided? Because the original ordinance is there, we're not changing the ordinance, we're just saying we're renewing it. Is that good enough of a motion?
Yes, and if your board wishes, there would be two, and just to streamline things, just two separate motions. The first one would be the one stated on the memo, move to approve AB481 slash Lake County Sheriff's Annual Military Equipment Report. Then the second motion would be to, motion to approve the renewal of ordinance number 3123.
3123, okay. I move to approve the report as presented today?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I move to renew ordinance 3123 as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. We'll move to 6.7, 10 a.m., Presentation in Consideration of the Economic Development Work Plan, and this is presented by Admin.
Presenting today will be DCAO Ben Rickelman.
Welcome, Ben.
Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Piska, board of supervisors. As mentioned, Ben Rickelman, I am a new deputy county administrative officer, I've been with the county for about three months, have about 10 years in economic development, and I want to give an update what I'm working on and what's occurring in the future. This is not a strategic plan. I think strategic economic development plans are great. I've done a few, and they bring a lot of clarity to kind of the present environment in providing kind of medium-to-long-term strategies and looking what resources you can leverage. Next slide. Oh, I can't do that. So when I was thinking through my work plan, what's an appropriate way to use resources and time, I came to these four focus areas that I think reflect kind of what are the opportunities out there in Lake County? Funding opportunities, communications, business development, and place-based economic development. So since there's a lot going on in broadband, I thought I would start with this. I know there was an update a few months ago, so I'll go fairly quickly. Working with our consultant, CBG Communications, the updated master plan will be ready in August, so we're wrapping up meetings with a bunch of different community partners, tribal nations, the private sector, getting a lot of good input, utilizing the master plan, and then thinking through the different federal funding opportunities, we're going to put together an implementation plan. Active right now is the federal funding account, so this comes with a combination of federal funding and state of California. Lake County has about 28 and a half million dedicated for last-mile broadband infrastructure. There's some stipulations on the program that I think will have an impact on Lake County in utilizing this. So the state clarified, I'd say in about the last month, that you, it has to be wireline, so you can't use fixed wireless. So when you think of the topography of the county, fairly amount of terrain in the more rural areas, that's going to have an impact on which projects are feasible. So working with a few different ISPs to identify projects, that kind of pencil with the subsidy per household to provide high-quality broadband infrastructure. The map on the right is the middle mile, so this is kind of, if you want to think of the highway of the internet. This is the state's plan for Lake County, so going 20, 29, and 175. They have a target of, by the end of 2026, of completing all of the middle mile in the plan for the state, and Lake County is a little higher up on the list, so that should help. I have heard there's some issues with inflation and getting labor forced to specific middle-mile projects that it's a bit delayed. Another broadband initiative, within the state's bill, there's a 775 million loan-loss provision that's being, I think it should be utilized by, RCRC has contracted with these two firms that have built open-network broadband networks. So they presented the county their high-level design about a month ago, and then in a few months, they're going to have a low-level design for specific areas where they see a cluster of unserved, underserved houses, where it's feasible to set up an open-network broadband solution. So there's a lot of exciting things in broadband, but trying to make the puzzle fit, I think certain communities, due to the state not allowing FFA money to be for fixed wireless, there has to be some other solutions. So one thing I'm going to explore, when the funding window opens again, is the California Advanced Services Fund, and it's a state-of-California program for broadband. It doesn't have kind of the funding power as the FFA, but it has wider parameters, so it could be an interesting solution for certain areas of Lake County. And there's one more. I know there's a lot of broadband things moving around, but it's called BEED, the Broadband Equity and Advanced Deployment. That comes from the infrastructure law. That was just what was recently announced about two months ago, that California received approximately 1.8 billion, so that hasn't touched Lake County yet. The California Public Utility Commission says the earliest localities could see that money is the middle of 2024. A nice thing about BEED is you probably will be able to use fixed wireless, so there's been some back and forth in Congress between the NTIA and congressional representatives advocating for that, so it seems like the feds have shifted their position somewhat. But one thing to consider with BEED, there won't be a fixed allocation, or it seems like that at the moment, for Lake County. So with the FFA, we have this 28 and a half million-dollar bucket of money, whereas with BEED, it's going to be more competitive grants. Some more acronyms. This is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It's a medium-to-long-term strategic planning document that takes an analysis of kind of the current economic conditions, and then thinking through different economic development strategies for a specific region. For Lake County, we are our own economic development district. The Lake County EDC has acquired some EDA funding to assist with this. So the last time Lake County completed a SEDS was in 2016, and that matters because EDA prefers localities to have SEDS been completed within the last five years, and then you can leverage that in current SEDS for different EDA funding opportunities. So kind of the two reoccurring EDA funding opportunities is adjustment assistance, which is kind of a catch-all, and then public works, which is physical infrastructure that's tied to high-quality job creation. The SEDS is also useful in regards to the EDA when there's kind of one-off funding opportunities, so EDAs receive a good amount of money through ARPA and the CARES Act. So it's always something good to kind of have in reserve, so you can show you've gone through this federal planning exercise, and you're speaking the EDA's language.
Can we go back to that? Sorry. So it says 2023, 2024 timeframe for an updated SEDS, is that the timeline that we're on?
Correct.
Okay.
So we just received the, the EDC just received the planning money a few weeks ago.
Okay.
So they're going to be issuing an RFP, I think in two to three weeks, to hire a consultant. So it's going to take some time. There's a fair amount of outreach, so it's going to be talking to a lot of different industry, and kind of for the size of Lake County, we should be able to touch almost every industry here. And then working with workforce, local and state government, too.
What was the amount of the technical assistance?
I believe, I think it was around 80,000, the EDC received.
Okay. So it's rolling now?
Yes.
We're just about to get rolling?
Yes. I would say it's going to get serious probably in the fall.
Okay.
By the time you process the RFP and hire the contractor. So more economic development planning with an acronym. This is the Community Economic Resilience Fund, so the governor's office, GoBiz, with ARPA funding, set up a $600 million pot. There's been a lot of emphasis in economic development the last few years, particularly with COVID, but also then, how can you take this crisis and kind of make it an opportunity in the decades to come? So this idea of economic resiliency and recovery has been really big at the federal level, and that's filtered down to the state of California. So there's this pretty robust planning group. Humboldt Poly is the lead organization, and then Arcata EDC is the fiscal agent. So they've been doing a lot of analysis, and it's publicly accessible, they put out a bunch of different slide decks about the region, different challenges, different opportunities it has. But I think this is kind of what I want to draw attention to now, is the governor's office announced, I want to say, three to four weeks ago, that they decided with SURF to create these buckets of money within it called, it's called the Catalyst Program. So this is the 26 and a half million for each region is dedicated, and our region is Lake County, Del Norte, Humboldt, and Mendocino. And a nice thing about this bucket of money is it's for both pre-development and development, so that means you don't have to have a shovel-ready project. You can kind of be blue-sky, whiteboard ideas, and you can, I mean, it's a competitive grant, so it has to be a compelling idea, but you can start somewhat at the beginning. So there isn't a timeframe yet when those are due, but there's several different participants in Lake County, which is great, and been happy to plug in, and hopefully, we will be pushing for a catalyst program funding soon.
So the 26 and a half million is for the four counties?
Correct.
And so those participants in the county would apply for that bucket of funds within Redwood?
Correct, and it doesn't have to be local government, it could be any entity that has kind of a compelling project. Before my time here, there was these kind of pilot programs, so Humboldt County, through the SBDC and the port, got some money to modernize the port at Fort Bragg, I think it was seven or eight million. So they do have an emphasis on equity and then environmental resilience, so there's a big emphasis kind of dealing with the impacts of climate change, but how that can also connect with economic growth and opportunity.
Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, just a quick question, you kind of alluded to it, but I don't know, sometimes the definition is different from person to person. You said equity, and typically, that means equity within a population. I just want to make sure, is there a way to ensure that there's equity between the four counties that are represented? Not to say we get an equal, perfect share of the pie, but that it doesn't all end up in somewhere else, and that we can all benefit from that. Obviously, we have to submit projects. You mentioned that we have a few people on the board with SURF or that are active with SURF. Just want to kind of check in, is there a way to ensure that we get something rather than seeing the 26.5 going somewhere else?
Well, first, I think it's important to be proactive. I'll just say, my experience here, you know, Humboldt has a larger population, it just has a more, I would say, robust economic development presence, just, you know, more people on payroll. know, more people on payroll, more organizations. So yeah, I think that is going to be a challenge. And so that's why I'm kind of starting the outreach and speaking throughout the community to see if there's kind of compelling projects. I mean, it does, it could also be a project across counties. So I don't know if there's something appropriate for all four counties, but there might be some partnership that makes sense. It could be like a workforce development project between Lake and Mendocino, which faces similar workforce needs.
And so basically priming ourselves to be as competitively attractive as possible, I would suggest anytime you need to come back to the board so that we can help out in some way, shape or form, or alert us what we can do on our individual basis outside of the board. I would be happy to, I, I, I think we should make sure to try to get as much of that 26.5 as possible, or our, our, our fair share.
Sounds great. This is the last funding opportunity slide. I know kind of gone through a lot of government programs. I did want to highlight EV chargers because that is going to be in the pipeline. And I think kind of our current condition with EV chargers puts us at a competitive disadvantage and just kind of the strictly economic development lens. So I've heard of several people running out of juice with their Tesla coming up here on vacation. And I think if that happens to you, you're probably not going to visit Lake County again. There's only a few EV chargers here. We also have the issue with the people, with institutions that do have EV chargers when they break. It's very expensive to fix them because you have to bring in repair staff from out of county. So I think the NEVI, the federal funding in the infrastructure law could be a game changer for Lake County. The state of California, the Energy Commission is going to issue their first solicitation in the next few weeks. That isn't going to include 20 and 29, but I think based on the state's ranking system will be in the second solicitation. So it should be, I'd say in the medium term, they say they want to issue all those solicitations by the beginning of 2025, but I think Lake Counties will be in 2024. But as part of my various outreach tax, I do want to bring to attention businesses and institutions, the new 30C tax credit. So this is in the IRA. It gives about 30% off on installation costs. The one kind of catch with it is it does have a prevailing wage standard. So reconnecting with the North Bay Alliance and talking about workforce, that directly connects with the second funding opportunity listed. So this is a new one off EDA program. There was about 200 million appropriated in the CHIPS Act. And the idea for this is to assist localities that have significant employment issues. So actually, the main qualifier is counties that have a lower prime age employment rate, so 25 to 54, which I think is actually the best, single best labor market indicator there is. The unemployment rate only measures people that are actively looking for work are the one you hear in the media, the U3. So anyways, this is to devise unique kind of needle moving workforce development strategies. And then if you get to the second phase, they call it implementation grants. So actually, it could be renovating a building, acquiring equipment. It could be a whole new capex construction. So it's going to be highly competitive. But I've started having conversations with individuals in the county and also in Mendocino. Kind of the direction, I mean, there isn't express rules, but the geographic scope, EDA's somewhat directed to is kind of two to three counties for a geographic area. So I think we fit well. We'll definitely be working with the Workforce Alliance on this. And we'll see where it goes. And happy to provide an update when I just started on this the last week or two, but it's fairly significant, so I thought I would bring it up. Biomass. So I'm sure there's been lots of conversations about this. It would be great for the county. The question is, can it be economically feasible? So having some conversations with RCRC, they are pursuing some projects in some other California counties. There is an issue with Lake without having freight rail access. Can a project like this pencil? So exploring some possibilities with different, there could be an injection of grant funding or a partnership with another locality that does have those transportation assets, and we could be part of a consortium. Just because there's such a need in the public safety side, if there's some way we could get this to be even cash flow neutral, that'd be great. And then finally, Economic Recovery Corps. So this is an ARPA funded program that recently started. Basically, it funds a full time fellow devoted to economic development. So they're looking for kind of a mid-career professional. It's a national program administered by the International Economic Development Council. Submitted application at the end of June. It would be jointly between County of Lake and then the Habanatolal Pomo of Upper Lake. So it'd be a 50 50 split. Haven't heard back, but we'll provide an update when I do.
Yeah, that's very cool.
For five years?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
So, so getting more kind of into the bread and butter, kind of what are the low hanging fruits, but what I think really needs to be done and what I'm going to be spending a decent amount of my time on for kind of the next half year. Thinking through different communication strategies, different resources, and then also how do we sell the county? So I think Visit Lake County does a great job regarding tourists. And that's their specific mission, which, you know, what that assessment's for, and I'm, it's great they have a board there that that's what they're focused on. So this is kind of outside of that. This is how, how do I build a business in Lake County, making the case to invest in Lake County, kind of explaining the quality of life. So putting kind of the online platform, but then also thinking through the marketing collateral. And from what I've seen in the county, some of it's a bit dated. So putting a kind of a higher level design polish on those pieces too. And also devising kind of explanatory pieces. So I think Lake County is a lot better than some localities in California, but just being in California, it is difficult to build here. It's complicated. Time is money. And so if people are more aware of the process upfront, what are the costs? Are they budgeting kind of a realistic timeframe into their project? Do they know kind of all the different approval verticals they have to go through? Even outside of county government? And so there's kind of more of an upfront awareness. I think that would be useful. Been also talking with community development with certain, how the process can be changed a little bit. So with broadband, I think badge permitting would be great. So if you have the same applicant doing a bunch of similar projects, how can you badge them together to increase the workflow? And then because this broadband construction is coming, thinking through a dig once policy. And so I want to kind of present an open door resource online that sells the county in a professional way, but also provides kind of realistic expectations for starting and maintaining a business here. And then also, this touches on also kind of selling the county and providing a realistic picture. So people within Lake County, I think, have a really strong sense of place and pride in their local community, which is great. But I think if you're someone a few hundred miles away from Lake County, you probably do not have that context. And I think that can be a real strong selling point. It's not for everyone, but you know, living in a semi rural county with, that's beautiful, that has, you know, it's a good place to raise a family, there's a lot of outdoor recreation. How can the county's website reflect that and kind of really tell those stories and highlighting individual businesses and entrepreneurs and kind of their community partnerships also? So I've heard, and this is not what I was anticipating when I started this job, but from many different industries, this is kind of a choke point, is the amount and quality of hotels here. So we do have some great lodging options, but A, it's a big county geographically. B, kind of the higher end product is somewhat limited. We do have some interesting, I guess I'd call it experiential product coming on, which is great, but that kind of applies to a specific market and audience. So I think there's a disconnect between kind of people doing the traditional site selection, they're just running the demographics, kind of the labor market data through and plugging it into their pro forma. And clearly, I think they're looking at the commute patterns and, you know, it, it takes a while to get it in and out of Lake County. So we're not having success there. So I think we need to tell that story ourselves. And so that's gathering specific stories and data from the industries here and kind of making that case. I've seen a lot of success with kind of these unique, either redevelopment plays or specific real estate attraction with issuing an RFI. So it just gives developers and investors kind of a two page summary and explaining the county's vision and how we can maybe facilitate it, but also kind of what are the compelling use cases here? If need be, it could also entail me telling the story outside of Lake County. Because the capital really isn't here for these projects. So you can have an online presence and that's a great place to start, but there might need to be those in person, one on one conversations. Another strategy is just thinking through site identification. So with the entitlement, SEQA processes here, that can be intimidating or just kind of initially cross these projects off the list. It's usually what I've seen with site selection. Their operating mode is first, how do I eliminate this location? So we kind of want to flip the conversation and show them there's a path forward. And so with the different attraction strategies, the online platform, my budget is roughly 40,000. So that primarily goes to design work. I understand in local government, not everything needs to be kind of a marketing machine on all the products you put out. But I really think in economic development, it's a pretty good ROI. Working with a professional design firm, it doesn't have to be anything super high end, but kind of a, a certain level of competency, producing pieces, has a software, has experience in these industries, I think is really useful. Last slide. So I believe place based economic development is really important. It is nice, the state of California does have the CDBG economic development set aside. I do think what the county has traditionally utilized it for is still important, small business lending. I've been working with CDS somewhat in that capacity, especially with tight in credit conditions with the Federal Reserve. That being said, you know, people want to have a quality community to live in and there's certain tools and strategies you can employ. I've worked on facade improvement programs before. I think they're great. They don't cost that much per business and they can really change the perception in the community. They can start that virtuous circle then where people want to invest in adjacent properties. But you know, we have a lot of small businesses here that have pretty tight cash flow. So to make these investments is a significant ask. So that's where these facade improvements programs really kind of step in. On the flip side, I know there's some issues with code enforcement and that can also have an impact on economic well being, kind of on the other side of the spectrum. So I think this is also a good application of the CDBG funding. So we'll be working in the future to figure out kind of the allocation between small business lending support, facade and code enforcement. If funding permits, it might be in the future, but if funding permits, I think another great use that's relatively inexpensive, but can have a big impact is signage and wayfinding, especially in this county where there's a lot of interesting things to do, businesses to visit, but it's fairly disparate. It's kind of nodes are on its own. So, you know, there's a good amount of people now that will do kind of rigorous online research, but what about that next thing to do when you're in Lake County? Are kind of opening their eyes and then just leaving a good positive impression when you leave and enter the county? So here are my anticipated timeframes. So the production work can happen fairly quickly since I control that. The hotel RFI, I think will take a bit longer because that's dependent on outside investment. So that's going to require establishing relationships, convincing them it's a worthwhile investment. The facade improvements and code improvements, so that's grant administration that's setting up a program that's giving businesses an adequate time to respond and implement. So it's going to take a bit longer. Broadband, there's roughly five programs. So that's going to be many years out. And then for EV charging and recompete, I don't have all the deadlines from the federal government yet. So those timeframes are a bit more uncertain. That's it.
Thank you for this presentation. I'm so excited that we have somebody dedicated to following all these threads that have been priorities of us for a long time. So this is really exciting and really appreciate the update. Luke, Supervisor Spatier?
I appreciate the presentation very much. Lot of potential for a lot of collaboration and different stakeholders taking part in that. Love the, the collaboration with Lake EDC as well. One of the things that's not mentioned in here, and it's a separate division, maybe in the same division, but it's housing. Economic development cannot happen without the housing available to, sometimes you're going to have to bring in some, some staff to fill in the new businesses that are coming in. And so we've got to make sure that we parallel that with our housing efforts. And I know that that's still moving forward as far as getting that accomplished. Just wanted to highlight that. Another part of it, and you, you tried to pull the rug from under my feet with your first statement. You said, this is not a strategic plan. I see this as a part of a much larger strategic plan. Without the economic development strategic plan, to do any other part of a strategic plan for the county, how are you going to afford it? You have to have an economic development plan within that. And so I just, I don't know what our timeline is or what our expectations are of building a much broader county wide strategic plan, which is not just admin department or CDD, it's most other departments overall, so that we can have a progress meter of how we're meeting our goals and what's the next thing to attempt to do. Just kind of wondering, I don't know if that's something that you can answer to or if admin can answer, CAO Parker, but just kind of curious where we are with getting to that point. This is a great opportunity here to have something that we can share with the public and then slowly show the checkboxes of things getting accomplished. I love those types of plans. Investors. Investors love those types of plans, but I want to see that broader one and kind of curious when we might get to that.
I don't mean to speak for Ben, but I'm going to. I think the first three months here, you know, we were, he was introducing himself, doing the community outreach, meeting with different stakeholders and agencies and developing this work plan and actually getting up to speed on California opportunities. And I think the gradual next step is to put out possibly an RFQ here. And I'm looking at him two, three months?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, and get it out. And so he'll be doing a lot of these lower hanging fruit, as you say, but also doing that parallel to that. And in the meantime, I'll be working on interviewing still DCO for housing and/or I have a RFQ put together if the one tomorrow doesn't pan out and go that way as far as retaining a firm to assist us. And at least doing the assessment and starting the housing, comprehensive housing strategic plan.
Perfect. And I wanted to bring it up for timeline purposes. I know it's something that we have already approved to move forward with. Just wanted to bring it up for this one. And then the last piece, your last slide about the frontage and the signage and whatnot, that splash of paint does a whole lot. That fixing of the fence or whatever it is that needs to happen to make our local, especially our business district, look attractive, it changes a whole lot. I know that we have a lot of, not trying to send you on a wild goose chase, but we have a lot of planned development commercial PDCs. I don't know how in-depth of a plan there was, but I see that as a potential opportunity by looking at those plans and looking at the revitalization of those areas and making sure that those plans maybe can be developed. Might be an easy place to start rather than trying to recreate the plans. I don't know if you've been through some of those PDCs. I know that if we look at our, if we look at our area plans, our local area plans that we have, they talk about some of those PDCs and the vision within those area plans are amazing. And if we can somehow involve those in this economic development plan, it would be great.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea and I'm happy to work with community development on that. I think you want to kind of strike a balance with wits in those plans, with the PDCs also, but with the individual business owner, they're going to have some vision. And so usually with facade improvement programs, you have some parameters. And it might be kind of more of a voluntary explanation and kind of getting them behind the vision. So you kind of have the hard rules. You can only use this public funds for this. But I think kind of getting everyone to row together with these facade improvements would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, very much appreciate the presentation and the work program looks great. A couple of things sprung up while you were doing that just kind of highlighted to me between that and the career point presentation. It's like, what's our brand? You know, it's, are we in North Bay County? And we're really trying to get those coastal influences from that. Consortium, you were talking about Redwood Rise. All of a sudden, we're with Mendo and Humboldt. And then I'm very cognizant, we have an ag economy. We're linked. We don't honor it a whole lot, but Calusa and Yolo Counties and our Central Valley partners over there. We don't have like one big glummy economy. We have a set of regional economies that maybe we don't understand the best and it kind of influences our branding. So as you're, as you're doing the work program and picking from card A and card B and stuff like that, I am kind of curious, is there, you mentioned a strategic plan. Is there a longer-term vision that we can get a strategic plan? Because I, I, I love the little elements in the work program, but it's just like, that's, that's a big chunk right there. But we still have this strategic planning effort and just really trying to get our heads around about how we're going to be 21st century Lake County to serve the Humboldt people, the North Bay people, our Central Valley people. What do all of those various pieces think of us? And then how, once we identify how they think of us, how can we prize some money out of them?
I can answer the first part for prizing money. That might be a little more difficult. So that is a really important part of the strategic plan. So launching in two to three months, strategic plans I've worked on in the past have done a pretty big analysis, kind of looking at the labor market, migration patterns, where you have certain strengths within industries and what are possible partnerships and key interventions you can make. From my initial impression, I do think there's a lot more similarity in kind of economic connectivity between us and Mendocino than some of the counties south of here. I understand there's a fair amount of work community going down into Sonoma County, but I think there is kind of a significant barrier there. I'm happy to work with those counties. I have had some conversations with them regarding broadband. There could be some interesting partnerships. Napp and Sonoma have done some, we'll see if they work, but they have some interesting strategies regarding broadband. So that's, that's my initial impression, but that's also why it's good to bring on a quality consultant that has that research chops, that can really do that quantitative analysis and also the focus groups to really think that they're in point us in the right direction.
And we're in a unique position because we are a bit, a region of our own, but we can collaborate with so many other regions for different reasons. And I think that that's a position of strength for us. So Supervisor Crandall?
Just real quick, just making the comments. I appreciate seeing this report first and foremost in regard to biomass. Mentioning the carbon credits and whatnot, I think that's a great idea. One of the biggest topics that we discussed at the, in Colorado, at the farm ranch and rural community of communities, there was a high emphasis on the carbon footprint and how our recommendations at that level for the advisory committee is going to influence the Secretary of EPA to implement the Inflation Reduction Act dollars. And so giving an emphasis on how our county deals with it and whatnot. And other rural counties like RCRC, how that can help us in regards to, you know, equity, social inclusion and things of that nature. But what I mean by that is there's a different definition for Colorado rural counties and Michigan rural counties than there is for ours. So, you know, being there and giving that insight, hoping that, or, you know, motivated to ensure that EPA can ensure some of that funding comes to our community as well. And I think we should probably talk more about that later, but yeah, just wanted to emphasize that.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Great job.
Oh, it's not done yet. We still have a couple more meetings, but.
Yeah, that makes total sense. So it's a huge need here and having that EPA funding, I think, could make a project realistic. So there's the issue with biomass. It's a low-margin, high-volume business. You know, wood is pretty ubiquitous throughout the world. So how do you make that pencil? So I know Buick County, Lawson County have put a lot of work into it. I've been talking to some leaders in those regions regarding that. So it's interesting. I know there is also other IRA tax credits in this space and I don't think the private sector has fully developed on new technologies that might make it more economically compelling. It's primarily at the moment, the wood pellets, which a lot are exported to Europe. We'll have to see policy-wise if they still count that as green energy. But I think there's some exciting possibilities. There's definitely a growing startup space with thinking through kind of mission-driven venture capital, thinking how we can utilize this biomass.
I think too, the RCRC group, I think it's the Golden State National Resources is working on that. I know it's been delayed. There's some, you know, some hiccups here and there. But I know the difficult thing is a biomass facility here intact. However, I know in talking with some of the staff, they are looking to, with counties like ours, you know, give the capability of bringing that mass to wherever the railhead is or whatever the case may be, to provide that to give to Europe, which is in high demand, to take care of a problem. And I know that Golden State Finance mentioned that it's mainly a project that will, it's not going to produce a lot of revenue, but it's going to solve a problem and maintain itself. So I know you're up to par on it. I know that we've been working with them on it, but I just wanted to highlight that. I think there was more. There was one more thing. I like the hotel attraction strategy in that right underneath it, you talked about the CDBG funding for economic development set aside for facade improvement, facade and code enforcement, because I'm one of the firm believers that with code enforcement, in which they are, they are doing a heavy lift right now and doing their best to take care of all the issues around the county. But with code enforcement intact, less dumping, things like that, it will give the, it'll get more traction to the situation, right? With hotels, people will come if they see more of an appealing area rather than some of the situations we have. So, yeah.
Supervisor Spatier?
I just wanted to mention one thing. I know that we passed it. I know Director Turner brought to us the AB 1236, which streamlines the installation or the processing of EV stations. Last I went to an RCRC meeting, I don't even think 50% of the counties had passed that yet or it was getting close to that. And so maybe that gives us a, hopefully a head start or a better score in the competition for the, compared to the other counties who have not passed that. And it was mandated that you have to pass it, but not every county has.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think it would be useful to put together, it could be even just a brochure, because a lot of these businesses, you know, they're interested, but it's not like their primary concern. So if they kind of had it spelled out for them, here's kind of the tools the county has given you to make this easier. Here are the potential tax credits. Here's this larger investment coming in the EV network that might tip the scale where they decide to make that investment then.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Not seeing anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone in the Zoom room?
That was a question to me, wasn't it?
Okay.
Just if I can make one final comment. I understand for the need for a succinct list. This is not an exhaustive list in my mind of economic development. We have a plethora of adventures to be had in Lake County, from hiking to mountain biking to horse riding to kayaking, whatever. And I think that some of those things are being looked at through other departments. For example, Public Services is working on trail systems and master planning for our parks. So I just, I just want to say it publicly that this is not a finite list and we're not looking at anything else. There's other people, other departments that are also working on things that I feel take part in economic development that just don't make that specific list that was shared with us today.
Yeah, to comment on that specifically, so I guess to use an economic development term, the recreation economy. So when talking about kind of in the short term, building that much more robust communications platform, that is definitely for quality of life, which is a major selling point here for starting and maintaining a business. So for the different outdoor opportunities. And I think there can be a good amount of work too, kind of just bringing up to speed different materials that highlight that for people that are outside the county or even people in the county. Like I've had to do, spend a fair amount of time outdoors and it takes a good amount of research to really figure out what's all available in Lake County. So to make that more readily accessible, I think, you know, you're checking a few different boxes. And that's definitely part of the short-term work plan.
And we're having a meeting about that tomorrow. You? And him?
I'm on it?
And Lars?
That's right, okay. It's all coming back.
It's all coming together. Okay, well, thank you for the presentation today and this is exciting. We're on this really, you know, this path that we've been wanting to get on for a long time and we're looking forward to your next presentation.
Sounds great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So that concludes our timed items. We'll move on to our untimed items. 7.2, consideration of resolution authorizing cancellation of reserve accounts in the amount of $3,167,543 to provide sufficient cash flow. We've got our behavioral health team here.
I'm just going to stay here.
Is that easier for you?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Board and your behavioral health director. I presented this item last week and Elise has more information than I do than I had last week. So I'm going to turn it over to Elise to present it this week.
Thank you, yes. So as was discussed, oh, Elise Jones, Deputy Director of Administration Behavioral Health. As was discussed last week, this resolution was brought forward to address any potential solvency issues, cash flow issues for the department due to the implementation of our new electronic health record. And we, the fact that we hadn't been able to process our claims for services since March 1st, which was the go-live. As of this week, I'm pleased to announce that we do have claims that are being processed. It's moving slowly. Unfortunately, the migration from the old system to the new system was messy. I suppose you can expect that. So the work is a bit tedious, but our team is very dedicated in processing those claims. So I'm very, very encouraged and I anticipate the flow of claims will continue to, to build and grow and we'll move into normal claiming routine here probably within a couple of weeks.
Great news.
It is.
And we still do plan for the board members that weren't here last time to, the time we present final budget, we would have some reporting on what these funds were spent on. This is mainly a fund balance issue more than really cash flow because you can use it, but we have to un- remove the wall of it being a reserve so that it can truly be utilized. And we'll, we'll provide some reports on what specific line items were spent on because some of the reserves are housing-specific or MHSA-specific. We'll provide some information on what it was spent on. And an important piece from last time as well is our plan, if all of our claiming starts going through smoothly before final budget, all of this plus more will likely go into reserves. So the plan is actually fully, put it back, but increase the amount as well.
I watched the video.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, thank you for the update.
Thank you. Anything from the public? Anyone in Zoom? Yes.
No hands in Zoom.
Come on up.
And while she's making her way up, hopefully the payments will be correct and it's not just being processed because there's always that aspect too.
She didn't bring it up, but it's a high error rate currently because of the new system. That's what's taking so long.
That's all.
John Moss, I was not here last week. I need to understand what's happening in case I write or broadcast something about it. I'm a Channel 8 reporter. So we're taking $3 million out of reserves to keep behavioral health going. That's what I understood you to say, but let me finish. And then by the time you have budget hearings again, that $3 million may have been returned again. Is that what you're saying? Okay, at least I understand it. Thank you.
And?
Go ahead.
And the main, the main reason for this, because since you weren't here last week, is our claim, we've moved to a new health record system, so main.
A different system.
A different system. And it hasn't gone through the billing with the state properly. The state hasn't paid us since March. So this is providing basically fund balance available to cover that time period.
Well, I really understand it because the agenda item was pretty alarming without understanding. But, so it's partly the state that hasn't processed what you sent them?
That's the entire reason for this.
What? What? It's entirely the problem of the state of California?
That, well, that's a weird way of wording it. But the new health record system is not communicating properly with the state that we are the pilot of for 23 counties moving for behavioral health to the system, that they're going live July 1. It is not functioning properly on the claiming side to reimburse us. State is not reimbursing us quite yet. We are now getting that rolling and that's why this will provide the funding available to continue our services until the state repays us, which will happen before September.
Well, I know that you and Elise and everybody has worked very, very hard and been principled and done their job. So that's what I couldn't understand. But now that I understand it's some system that the state has that has malfunction for all the other counties also, true?
Yeah, it's not meshing yet.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll talk with you individually, but I just wanted to know the initial idea of it, what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no more public comment, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
And just before, I'll offer the resolution, but just for those who weren't here, this is going to be a four-fifths vote. That's one reason it did come back. We do take the transfer of this site seriously and we're actually required to take additional diligence for that. And with that, I offer the resolution.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Green.
Aye.
And Supervisor Pesci.
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you. 7.3, consideration of the following advisory board appointment for mental health board for Julie Pennington. Any comments from the board?
Just appreciate Ms. Pennington for stepping up. She's been very valuable in my time of dealing with this committee, and I know she's going to be crucial to us moving forward under a very exciting time with our new BH Director.
Okay, anything from the public? Comments? Anybody in Zoom? Can we bring it back to the board for action?
There's nothing else. I move to appoint Julie Pennington as Chair of the Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. 7.4, consideration and establishment of just compensation for properties to be purchased for the Hill Road Slide Repair and Restoration Project and Public Works Director DeLeon.
Good afternoon, Board. Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. Today's item is for your consideration and establishment of just compensation for properties that we intend to purchase for the Hill Road Slide Repair and Restoration Project. As your board is aware, 2014, the hillside adjacent to Hill Road experienced some significant movement causing extensive damages to the neighboring community known as Lakeside Heights and created a lot of damage there and a continuous threat to Hill Road. As you're aware, we, just about every winter, are removing material from, from the roadway. Hill Road is our primary route to Sutter Hospital from the North Shore communities, so it's a very important road for us to keep open. This project has been delayed for numerous reasons, but we finally have a repair completed. The design is completed and our consultants are working on property acquisition. Today's item is intended to actually accomplish a couple of things. One of them is to establish just compensation for the properties that we would like to acquire, which will be in accordance with federal code requirements. And then the other thing is to satisfy some requirements of the California Government Code, and I'll go over both of those. Because this project is federally funded, it is subject to the requirements of the Code of Federal Regulations. 49 CFR Section 24.102D states that before the initiation of negotiations, the agency shall establish what it believes is just compensation for the property. The amount of just compensation cannot be less than the approved appraisal of the fair market value of the property. Attachment A to the memo lists the properties and their address and the fair market value, which was the appraised value as performed by Bender Rosenthal Incorporated, our consultant. I should also note that in accordance with the federal regulations, those appraisals were formally reviewed and certified by a third-party evaluator. And again, that's in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations. With regard to the state government code, and, and we've seen, and your board has seen numerous closed-session negotiations for properties, the California Code says that a legislative body of a local agency may hold closed session with its negotiator, negotiator, prior to the purchase, sale, exchange, or lease of real property and grant authority to the negotiator regarding the price and terms of payment. However, prior to that closed session, the legislative body of the local agency shall hold an open and public session in which it identifies its negotiators, the real property or real properties, which are the subject of the negotiations and the person or persons with whom the negotiations may negotiate. And so again, Attachment A has the list of properties and we will be, the negotiators on behalf of the public will be myself, the Public Works Director, and representatives from Bender Rosenthal Incorporated, which is our subcontractor. We will be negotiating with the owners of those properties that are listed on Attachment A. So with that, we have fulfilled the requirements of the California Government Code by handling the open session, public session, and identifying the properties, the negotiators, and who will be negotiated with. We've also complied with the Federal Code of Regulations, which is required. And I should note that any, any subsequent negotiations will be held in closed session under, with proper notice. So any follow-up negotiations where I may need to come back, those will all be held in closed session. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions, but staff is recommending that your board determine that the just compensation for the properties listed in Attachment A be not less than the fair market values as determined and shown in, in Attachment A.
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Sabatier.
Appreciate the presentation and appreciate your time with some emails with me yesterday. Just a quick question, and I apologize if you did respond to those and I missed it. It's a, so what I've experienced with you before in the past is acquisition of properties on South Main. I don't have an issue with South Main. There's definitely an issue with this area. That's why we're trying to fix it. What's, what's the potential timeline for this repair to be accomplished? As I'm concerned about the liability of owning property that might be sliding onto vehicles, that might be sliding on pedestrians, because we do continue to see that through each winter. So that's my only concern here, other than obviously the process was done correctly and I agree with the quotes that are, are the appraisals that were made. But that's the only lingering question that I have in my mind is what liability are we taking on if this is a 10-year project versus if it's going to happen within the next foreseeable future?
So we have some funding deadlines for construction. We, we need to get this project built. There won't be a 10-year delay between the acquisition of the properties and, and the construction. If things go well, we'd like to try to get this project out to bid. Don't know if we'll have construction done this year, but we're, we're hoping things go smoothly, and this is the first step in that process. Construction next summer, if things get hung up, would be latest, latest time for construction.
I think that's a doable timeline, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and just very quickly, the, the acquisitions that we're doing are all part of, they're going to be incorporated into the, the design of the, the repair, so.
Supervisor Green.
Thank you for this very thorough report. It's probably going to be more of a comment than a question, but I mean, the intent of this appears to be to set a baseline that we can go in a negotiation, but we can't go below what fair market value is. But it raises the question, well, what do we, what would we possibly negotiate then in closed session if we can't go below the floor? And we would probably have a general prohibition against overpaying for properties over their for fair market value, because that wouldn't be a good use of public funds. So I guess it is what it is. I'm not going to ask you to explain the reasoning for this, but it, it's going to box us in during the closed session.
Let's, let's, let's just wait and have that conversation when we need to.
Is my characterization fair, though? The intent appears to be to set a baseline.
That's exactly what this is, is you're setting a baseline. You are establishing the just compensation for the property, which is the minimum amount based on the, the appraisal of the fair market value. So yes, that's, that's exactly what you're doing is creating the baseline from which to start.
And the recommended action is basically findings. We're going to make findings today?
Yes.
Any comments or questions from the public? Do we have anybody in the Zoom room?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
There's nothing further. I move that the board of supervisors find and determine that just compensation for the properties listed in Attachment A be no less than the fair market values as determined by the appraisals performed by Bender Rosenthal Incorporated and formally reviewed and certified by Sierra West Valuation and authorize the Public Works Director to provide approval to commence negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also just want to very quickly thank Lloyd for all of his guidance and patience. He's, he's got a lot on his plate and he's been very helpful, so thank you.
Thanks, Lloyd. 7.5, sitting as the county, as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, consideration of resolution revising the fiscal year 2022-2023 adopted budget of the County of Lake by counseling reserves in the Fund 255NW Regional Sewer System O and M Reserve Designation in the amount of $150,000 to make appropriations in the budget unit 8355, object code 785.30-00, utilities to pay for sewer utility costs. This is special districts. And do we have?
Scott Hornick.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Honorable Chair and board members, this is basically to cover the cost of PG&E. We had a wetter-than-normal winter, which ended up having to run pumps and aerators in the lagoons longer, run the Geyser effluent pipeline longer, run times, which ended up increasing the PG&E costs. Typically, we do an actual five years, what were the last five years to budget for the, the up and coming year, and that was the result of having drier, drier winters in the past.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Anything from the public? Anyone in Zoom?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay. Bringing it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I offer the resolution.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Green.
Aye.
And Supervisor Pesci. Yes. Okay. And we will do calendars next. 7.1, who's ready to go?
Let me start with 5.9.
Oh, let's do 5.9. That's great. 5.9, approved contract between County of Lake and People's Services, Inc. for yard maintenance in the amount of $9,656.87 per fiscal year from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026, and authorize the chair's sign pulled by Supervisor Sabatier.
Yes, thank you for that. Within the contract, it states, and I apologize, I didn't have it open, but within all of the service anticipated to be accomplished by People's Services, it states to do a defensible space of 10 feet around the building. I don't have the exact location right here on page four. It says two times a year, maintain defensible space around parking lot, clear dead, dried weeds back 10 feet around perimeter of building. And so my, my, the, the, not everything is perfectly symmetrical or like the building's not perfectly in the center of the parcel. There is a parking lot that mostly surrounds it. It doesn't define what maintain defensible space around parking lot is. But I know that based on the rules and regulation coming from CDD, because this is a 4920-compliant building, that it requires a 100-foot defensible space around the perimeter. And I want to make sure that we're applying the same rules and regulations to what we're asking from our public buildings to what we're asking our public community members. And so even though it does say maintain defensible space around parking lot, there's certain parking lots that stop at 80 feet and still have some room after the fact. I don't know if someone else is taking care of that, and they're, they just, to me, that stood out. I've had conversations with Director Marketan, and it's just something that I feel uncomfortable approving when we're saying that our, potentially saying that our rules that CDD goes out and applies to all community members is not the same application that we're providing to our building here.
Go ahead.
Hello, Board. Crystal Marketan, Director of Social Services. I have our administrative deputy, Kelly Page, here, who will explain the language in the contract. Kelly?
Good afternoon, everybody. Looking at the contract, I do understand the concern that Supervisors Sabatier have with the language, and we have reached out to our contractor and they are agreeable to change the language to say they will clear dried dead weeds as required to maintain a minimum 30-foot clearance around the perimeter of the building. The issue beyond that is Anderson Marsh ordering our parking lot area. We'll have to work with the state to be able to do any additional abatement into that property. But as far as the contractor we're using for our landscape maintenance here, they are more than willing to change that language to match the county ordinance as it is currently out there.
And, and just as a quick argument on that, so I know that it does say 30 feet in our code, but I just got clarification from CDD that when it's 4290 or whatever it is compliant for roadways and development, that it has to be 100 feet. And I, I don't know that we can put 100 feet today without knowing if the contractor is okay, but if it happens to be that 80 feet from the building is your perimeter, then all you have to do is take care of your 80 feet. That would be someone else's responsibility once it's on, not on your property. But if you have 120 feet from your building, then you need to make sure that that 100 feet between the building and the perimeter has defensible space. If it happens to be a parking lot area, then obviously there's nothing for you to do. But if it becomes grassy area, then that means that you have to knock down the weeds and that, that takes care of that, of being in compliance. And so I, I would prefer, and of course, I see that Director Turner popped in, if it has to be 100 feet based on the rules and regulations, that we also match that same number as well.
If it pleases the board, Ms. Page does make a good point, which is consistent with Public Resource Code 4291 for improved parcels. We're, we're not liable past the lot lines. And so if we take a look on GIS, it does look like the, the parking lot extends pretty close to that lot line. And so it may not require the 100 feet because there may not be 100 feet to be maintained. may not be 100 feet to be maintained. So I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just would like to add to that. You know, we already have the additional 10 feet past the parking lot, and this is in state park land. And so I am assuming that it would take, you know, some negotiation at least to see if we can actually cut further into that. But it sounds to me as though we do meet the minimum requirement and beyond for clearance.
I don't think we need to go beyond our property line.
So I'm not asking, so I read this and I saw 10 feet, and I said, "That doesn't make any sense to me" because we're asking 30 feet or 100 feet from the public. So what I did is I opened up GIS and measured from the building to the perimeter. From the building to the perimeter, sometimes it's 80-something feet, sometimes it's 120 feet. So why not put 100 feet? As soon as the perimeter ends, we're not supposed to go on someone else's property and take care of it. That would actually be a phone call to CDD and say, "Hey, can you get this other neighbor to take care of the clearance?" Because that's possible within our hazardous vegetation ordinance. But to put 10 feet, which says perimeter of building, not 10 feet around parking lot, by saying 100 feet setback, 100 feet defensible space from our building within our perimeter, at least it covers everything that needs to be kicked back or taken down in the same exact way that we ask our community members to do so when we go to their properties and say, "Hey, knock down your weeds. You have to have 100-foot setback." If they only have 50 feet between their building and their perimeter, they're not going to go in their neighbor's yard and do that either. They got to take care of the first 50 feet. So I just, I feel it doesn't state what we ask our community members, and I want to make sure that we have that same level of compliance.
Is there a language that you want to use to amend this, or do you want to bring it back?
I would, I don't know if the language can be approved today for the fact that I don't know if it increases the price from 9,000-something to more if we say 100 feet. But I would say that it needs to meet the guidelines of a defensible space within 100 feet from the perimeter of the building within the parcel that we are leasing.
We're already consistent with that, and we don't mind changing that language. You know, we wrote this as a contract for the provider, and they're really only doing 10 feet because we're already at the 30-foot point, and we cannot go further into the state park land on that side. So the rest of the buildings are all meet well, and so does this one. We just, that's as far as we can go there, and we were simply putting the language in about the area that we wanted the contractor to maintain. So if, you know, if you want instead it to reflect that we are consistent with the regulations, then that's fine. But we were writing it from the perspective that this is what we were asking the provider to do.
And from my understanding, this is the only provider that Social Services, because I know, I believe I asked that question, and I apologize if I missed the answer, that this is the only provider that does defensible space for the ranch?
Yes. We actually don't have a need for anyone else. We also have facility maintenance, and as I mentioned, we are within the regulation.
And again, my goal today is not to prohibit this, it's to match. And again, I'm measuring right now on GIS, on the south side of the building, you have 165 feet until the perimeter of the parcel from the building. On the west side, it's slimmer than 100 feet. On the east side, it's a little longer than 100 feet. And I just want to make sure that whatever's within that 100 feet, we're doing exactly what we ask, because sometimes we're finding people for not doing what we're asking them to do. I just want to make sure that we are within a contract, not saying you're only going to do 10 feet because the rest is already in compliance. We're, I don't know. I feel uncomfortable with not stating what we're asking everyone else to do. And of course, the rest of the board, just one single board member, this can easily pass without my approval of this. So hearing from other board members would help.
Well, if I can, yeah, I appreciate the concern, that it's really an application of what, 4290, 4291, that sort of thing. And whether it's a county-owned facility or a leased facility, and whoever's maintaining it, whether it's county employees or contractors like in this case, I guess it would be kind of a broader question. If we got granular and went very site-specific in our various properties, how compliant are we with 4291 and any relevant standards? I don't know if you want cherry pick that one contract at a time, and I'm not aware, like Chair was saying, is there any recommended language? I wouldn't know how to come up with the language on the fly. But I think what you're trying to get is we want to get generally 4291 compliance baked in to our maintenance contracts and into our buildings and grounds, and I totally agree with that. I'm just not sure what the mechanism would be, and I'm kind of thinking it would be a fairly involved process to do a survey or an audit of our properties to make sure we're doing everything we can with our crews and any contractors maintaining our buildings. So I like the idea. I'm just kind of getting lost in the weeds, if you will, about how to proceed with this contract.
Well, I don't think we need to look at all of our properties. I think we're just looking at this one today, and...
And I will just highlight that my concern also comes from the area that it's in is of great concern if there's a large fire in that area. It's not our building, but it is our staff, and it is important to keep the building in order to continue the services. And so, and again, meeting the exact same guidelines that we offer everyone else. And ready to move on and move forward, depending on how the board feels.
I guess I do have a question. I'm still not understanding how we're out of compliance. We're bordering a property we can't cut further into.
So defensible space, you measure it from your house to the property line. So if you have 100 feet, you clear 100 feet. If you have 20 feet, you clear 20 feet. Whatever's on the other side of the property line is the other property owner's responsibility. And so it looks like there is some part of this that is, that there is room to do a little bit more. That's what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
And you feel very strongly about this, so I'd be okay with bringing this back if you want to adjust the language and adjust the contract amount. It is in a, it is in an area that...
Yes, where, what is the specific area that we can do more in?
The south part, right?
And I can't say specifically because I'm not on the site, but if this is the only contract we have to do defensible space for that property, and we're saying only focus on the 10 feet around the perimeter of the building, which is the only specific that we have on what kind of defensible space we're doing, I just think the language should be clear dead dried weeds back 100 feet within the perimeter of the parcel around the building. And to me, it would be as simple as that, and if that means you do nothing more than what you've already been doing, at least the language speaks to exactly what the rules are rather than specific to the building, because the rules don't care what else is happening on the property. It's just saying if weeds happen to start growing in the parking lot, if weeds are growing in the dirt area, if trees have low-hanging limbs, those, that's part of the defensible space thing. And my concern again is about equity between what we're showing in our contracts when we say we're doing defensible space versus what we're asking people to do when we submit notice of violations. And matching the contract language with the rules and regulations, even if it changes nothing on your end, to me makes me feel more comfortable because the contractor is not going to go past 10 feet from the perimeter of the building based on the contract. And if you need to go 80 feet to 100 feet and clear the rest out because the parking lot stops at the 80-foot mark, the contract doesn't fulfill that for me. And so I feel more comfortable in matching language with law.
So suggested language could be on page four would be to clear dead dried weeds back 100 feet around the perimeter of the building or to the property line, whichever is less.
And I would ask for County Council to figure out what the best potential language would be to, for that. But yes, something to that effect.
So that is a language that the board, that your board may consider. The other option possibility is for that specific section on page four, second sentence where we delete the phrase "back 10 feet" and state, so that it would only state "clear dead dried weeds around perimeter of building subject to applicable clearance requirements and regulations", a little bit broader. And I will, we staff would, well, I would defer to Social Services to see if that would be amenable to the contractor because I believe the...
It's signed.
It's been signed, so it would have to go through the contractor's review and approval for any amended language in the contract.
And I'd be okay with it.
Kelly?
I guess I just wanted some clarification on the recommendation for the footage we're talking about. We want to go with 100 rather than the 30 feet in the ordinance. Is that correct?
And from what Director Turner has told me, and I believe repeated here in the public session, is that by law, it has to be 100 feet.
Once again, we don't have 100 feet in front of the building. And when you're talking about southwest, I'm oriented towards the marsh and toward, you know, and then the back of the building. So the area I believe you're speaking about is towards the marsh, which we do not have the ability to...
I'm speaking all around the building, not one specific direction. And I'm looking at the map right now, and you have more than 100 feet between the building and your property boundaries on specific sides.
Right. I mean, I feel like the building is in compliance as much as we can bring it. Our feelings are. But if it's a semantics issue, we have no problem with changing the language, and we'll work with County Council.
And just to clarify, I am not saying that your property is not in compliance. I, my preference is the contract language to be with the built-in compliance of what our rules and regulations are. I am not trying to make any statement that currently if I went to your building that you are not in compliance with what it is. I just want to make sure that what we're asking everyone is the same.
I, well, okay, you know, we will do that, but I do think that will be confusing for the contractor. We can have a side conversation about that. Because it's not really specific to what we're asking the contractors to do.
I don't know what else I can say.
Go ahead.
So our office can work with Social Services to see any options, possible options for amending the language that would incorporate contractor's review of it under this agreement.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Got consensus to bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay, now we will go on to 7.1 calendars. I'm just wondering, Supervisor Crandall, you have a lot to report?
Okay. I just got it finished. So I'll start out with last week. So last week, I went to Colorado for the Farm Ranch and Rural Communities Committee for the EPA. And so let me get to the top of my calendar. If it's, yeah, there it is. Okay, so I, we got out there on Monday for travel. And Tuesday morning, we started bright and early, took a tour out from Denver to Fort Collins. There's about 30 representatives from across the nation. There's two others from California, one from, I want to say, Madera County, and another from the Bay Area in California as well. The rest are comprised of farmers, and there's actually an attorney from Harvard as well on there, and different colleges, different, not teachers, they're called something else, professors, there it is, professors, and other folks with vast experience in policy. And so regardless, we started out at the Denver Urban Gardens. That's in, it was somewhere in, I think it was a site for a school, like a high school or something like that. But either way, it was a group of folks that do food, community, and climate. They encourage their communities to implement community gardens in order to help with the climate. And so they invited an EPA Brownsfield representative to talk about how the government over there uses or works with, how the Brownsfield aspect works with the local governments with spaces that are not being used to help implement an enhancement so that they can help with the climate in that aspect. So I thought about us in a little ways because we have the subdivisions, the paper subdivisions, but further discussion later. That was just what I thought of when I was at that. It was very, very intriguing. Next, we went to the Northern Colorado Water Conservation District. We talked with, they gave us a tour on how they talk with and work with urban water users about how they use the water efficiency. They give out training tools and education audits for a more resilient landscape designs and management. I know we had a presentation about that a couple of months back with Community Development. They discussed how they have a multi-county taxing commission to bring water to the northern fronts of the ranches. And then they talked about their threats with wildfire and how they've suffered from multiple, I think there was like 800, I guessed 130, but there was like 800 fires within the last, I want to say, five years or something like that. And they emphasized the Cameron Peak Fire. That's probably one of their bigger fires that they talked about and how they're working to, you know, deal with it how we are. So following that, we went to Spring Hill Greens, which was a carbon-neutral food production site where they talked about agrivoltaic usage to power the farm. And they had these really cool bifacial panels, solar panels that offset 100% of a farm electricity, and they move with the sun, so they don't just stay in one place. It was really, it was really a good site as well. AgNext at Colorado State University, where they focused on sustainable research and outreach group with animal ag focus. They took us on a tour where we seen all these steers who eat out of this mechanism to process methane, and how they use digestors and convert some of that methane into carbon credits and things of that nature. Then the last presentation we had was with the Mars Milky Way Manure Waste Owner, is talking about anaerobic digestors and how they work with cow dairy operations and corporate capital investment. That's all I have written on that. But it was, it was a needed discussion because in that group, we have, and that was the end of the tours. We went to the hotel. We were in Denver. We went from, I mean, I'm sorry, we were in Fort Collins. So we went from Denver to Fort Collins. It was a long day, but it was, it really helped. It gave me the insight I needed in regard to this, into this committee. And so with that, these presentations really were germane to the work groups, the climate, finance, social inclusion, inclusion, and technical assistance, which is what I'm now on. I used to be on what was called the Water, Energy, Climate Nexus. And they're talking about digestors. Well, I didn't know anything about digestors until we went to that. So I decided that either way, there needed to be more farmers and ranchers and dairy operators on that committee, and I was just kind of like taking up a spot. So I switched to the other, and I had a lot more input when it came to that. And our focus with that... And, uh, our focus with that, um, is to work in these ad hoc groups to provide recommendations for the letter to the Secretary Regan, who will, um, implement the budget, uh, recommendations to, you know, Congress or President. Um, but our, our recommendations are, um, that we either are going to decide to move forward with some of the recommendations from ad hoc groups or not. Um, one of the things that we had a really long discussion about is how to implement what we're talking about, social inclusion and technical assistance. Uh, we want to provide funding to support research and rumen- ruminant methane emissions, which we talked about. Uh, share state definitions and guidelines for funding to develop standardized language around climate finance, um, technical assistance. Um, in talking about that, we were like, you know, there needs to be a developed streamline for user-friendly applications, um, to target support for technical assistance in, in communities like ours, underserved communities, which we also discussed how to, uh, nationally describe underserved communities and disadvantaged communities because we have different, uh, I guess you could say, uh, demographics and different, um, ways that we define that. Um, and so, uh, numerous other ideas, but we're now working further through those ad hoc groups because, uh, we weren't able to finalize the letter. So now we're going to have a Zoom meeting in September to bring forth our further work in the ad hoc groups, um, and finalize the letter for vote so that we can send this letter to Secretary Regan. Just real quick, climate, uh, the other ad hoc groups are climate adaptation and resilience. Um, they're, they're mainly focusing on coordination and collaboration with local government and, uh, prioritizing co-benefits and climate initiatives to scale impacts. Um, and then, um, there is one more group, biotech, biotechnology and ag inputs. They were actually looking at drones, um, to, uh, identify use of pesticide, drift overspray and, and dangerous species. So as you can see, that's also why I switched over to, uh, what we're talking about. Because our, our definition of farming here and, and, um, you know, in regards to some of this is, is a little different than what's happening in the Midwest. So, and, and, and further out. Let's see, Thursday, we did, uh, some presentations that went through. Won't, won't go into the details, but they actually were germane to our ad hoc committees. So, and there was one called, uh, that really helped, Technical Assistance, Environmental Justice, Thriving Communities, Technical Assistance Centers. They're working on putting these throughout the, uh, the nation. They have one in San Diego, and I'm like, hey, you know, we, we can't get to San Diego. And we are in desperate need of these Tic Tac Centers, as though that's the acronym for it. So, um, still looking further into that. And once we heard that as an ad hoc group, because the Wednesday evening, that's when we actually had our breakout groups in person. That was the first time we actually all got to meet together and talk and get moving on some of what we're, we're working on. But, um, but these really helped with that. Um, we did a, a tour of a seed vault. It was, uh, the, it's, uh, Agricultural Research Services, National Genetic Preservation Research Lab at Colorado State University. That's where it was at, Colorado State University. And what was really cool about that is every seed plant or whatever the case may be, they had the seeds and the, uh, pollen and all of that to, you know, to ensure that you can always have that and it doesn't go extinct. Same with animals. So they had, uh, you know, sperm and embryo. That was quite, uh, discussed at length. We went into the vault. It was very cold, but it was hot there, so I was glad to go. And then it was really, uh, an interesting tour, and I think everybody was really excited about that. It was really, uh, productive, uh, meeting. I already explained what we'll be doing from here forward, but that, uh, letter is very important. I know that when I asked about last year's process, um, there's second, uh, there is, um, Rod, um, I can't think of his last name, but he's, he is the Rod Snyder, um, Venus White Welch, and then, uh, Linda Brown. They're the only staff that work with our committee. So they're, you know, they're, they're, uh, they're who I talked to about what implementations or recommendations were forwarded to the EPA last year, and did they use any of them? And they said, yes, actually, they, out of like three or four per group, they at least took one each. And so that's like, uh, a really, uh, promising deal there. And so I, at my town hall last night at CERT, I mentioned to them, said, "This is an, an avenue that you can use as an analogy to recommend to us as the board supervisors, because this is what we're doing at that level when I gave that report." So just a sidebar there. Yeah, then I came home Friday, um, and then, uh, Monday did Central Region Town Hall, as you, uh, heard me say earlier. And so that's, uh, where I was at this coming week. Um, oh, I didn't even get to that. So, uh, um, I will just let the next person go because I've been talking a long time. And then if you come back to me afterwards, I'll, I'll fill that in. Oh, one more thing. Uh, sorry, there was, um, uh, when we had the public input, we couldn't really give a response. But, um, constituent emailed me, uh, from Double Eagle Ranch and wanted to give accolades to the same two that were presented today, Linda Rosa Spill and, uh, Antonio. And so, uh, the work that they do out there. They, they wanted to highly commend Spring Valley, Double Eagle Ranch, and, um, what is it, the Roadmap Task Force, so, yeah.
So you don't want to do your coming up week?
Okay, I will. Here it is. Uh, so let's see, let me get the week going here. So this week we have, oh, tomorrow is the, I know we have something you said. Um, I don't remember what that is.
Lars.
Lars.
Lars and Ben.
Oh, that's right. We have that side, uh, okay.
Person here.
So we have that meeting. Um, let's see, we have, um, the Middle, Middle Creek Project Development, Delivery Team Biweekly Meeting with, uh, Army Corps. Um, and then, oh, yeah, there it is, LCR, Countywide Recreation. That's right, that's our, uh, meeting tomorrow. And then, um, West Region Town Hall in Upper Lake, 5:30 at the Upper Lake, uh, Habemutlal Community Center, Lake County Solid Waste Task Force. I have that listed. Not sure if that's still happening, but it, I have it in, um, tentative. I don't know why. But, um, NACO on Friday, uh, Monday, let's see, next week. Monday, I don't, I just, the CIO meeting and back here on Tuesday for the board meeting. There.
Done. Okay. Are you ready?
Yeah, sure. Uh, so appreciation for, uh, Jonathan Armis, our Director for Animal Control. We met with the City of Clear Lake to look at, uh, what ways we can collaborate. Uh, the City of Clear Lake's dealing with, uh, overpopulation in their shelter and just a, uh, whole lot of, uh, issues with, uh, puppies and, uh, stray dogs and trying to figure out how we can work together. And we did find some good solutions. Basically re-energizing an old, uh, agreement that we had in the past. And so, uh, working towards that. Uh, met with, uh, Cal Trout. That was actually a really good conversation, a different tone versus than our previous conversation. I, uh, did not leave frustrated. And I hope we shared with you the beautiful picture, uh, that they shared with us because that was pretty awesome.
That was.
Met also with, uh, Wellpath for Jail Medical to review their numbers, uh, their statistics on a quarterly report. Um, everything looked good. We had some good conversations on, um, what Cal AIM is coming down, uh, as far as any changes in that direction. Uh, but just overall, that was a good conversation. Uh, sat in as an alternate for the clearing water program. Uh, we just approved today, uh, to have somebody come up with a, um, feasibility study or a plan for, uh, decreasing the pollutants coming into our lake. Uh, that's quite an important part. And also appreciation to Scott Harder, met with them regarding a, um, a build-out, uh, housing development that's happening in the City of Clear Lake that has a couple of, uh, kinks that need to be ironed out. And our next meeting, I'll be inviting CAO Parker, uh, to the conversation as well as we elevate that and see, uh, what we can do. And this is on the, uh, property that we did the exchange for the armory. So that's why the county is, uh, involved in that conversation other than the sewer district. Uh, so that's, uh, last week, just a quick summary. Uh, this week, um, I think my Lafco meeting should be done in time to join the Middle Creek conversation because that looks like that starts at about 11:00. Uh, we start at 9:30, uh, so hopefully I'll be in there. If not, I'll be in Lafco after that as, uh, AVA meeting. And, um, later on that evening, I'll be, uh, guest speaker at the Highland Senior Center, um, for the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. On Thursday, I think everything on my list is pretty much blank as I think we're leaving early enough, um, to head out to, uh, Travis County, Texas, to go to the NACO conference. And that pretty much cancels the rest of my week until we, I don't even know when we're coming back on Monday, but we will be here on Tuesday uh, because I don't think we're making our meeting.
I just assumed.
That's, that's pretty much it. Because of the, uh, NACO conference, there's not much to say.
To Perez Green.
Thank you. Met last week with Mental Health Advisory Board. Want to thank again Chair Pennington for doing a great job. Glad you got reappointed today. Um, they do some good work. Uh, also Thursday evening, I want to highlight, uh, Robinson Rancheria, uh, did a fantastic job. They did a swear-in ceremony for Officer Kyle Wheeler. Uh, I don't want to thank the chief for inviting, uh, Supervisor Simon. And I were able to attend. Sheriff Howe, uh, Lieutenant Polich, PIO was there. A full room, very moving ceremony, uh, very significant hire. And I say this as someone who was totally ignorant of the fact they even had a police department until last week. But now I know, and now I know that, um, just how big a deal this was. Um, there's one person, uh, Special Agent in Charge for the entire state of California for the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Mr. Christopher Lorenz, attended that ceremony as well and took pains to, uh, in addition to the badge that was presented to Officer Wheeler, he, he got his deputization card. And I guess that gives him some additional powers, uh, in some of the lands he's going to be charged with doing. Uh, very moving to see a young man who self-acknowledged some of his challenges early in life, uh, to see, uh, the chief sees something in him and really fast-track him on this process. And, and to see this, uh, new officer come, uh, it, it was just a fantastic thing. And I can't say enough positive about that. Friday, uh, I did attend the ceremony where the Lake County Grand Jury, uh, was discharged for their service and the new grand jury was impaneled for the coming year. Uh, it's a very important process. A lot of people don't understand it or appreciate it necessarily, but, um, a- as you'll see in the report coming out, uh, and in the hard work that they will continue to do in the coming session, uh, our grand jury rocks. And I appreciate them for their service and I appreciate the Superior Court, um, for facilitating that service. Uh, did have a brief meeting with PG&E regarding some undergrounding going out on Scotts Valley Road. They get pretty good, they get pretty granular with the notifications. Although there has been some construction out there, uh, to my knowledge, the neighbors have been well notified, the traffic disruptions have been, uh, handleable, and, uh, it's good to see that work continue. And I think that's about that. Looking forward to next week, Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council on the 24th. All CP meeting with CAO Parker, um, Board of Supes on 25th. Uh, I'll be heading out on the 26th Sacramento for my last session, I believe, of, uh, CSAC new supervisors. And I think that's about it.
Okay. Yesterday, we had the Risk Reduction Authority meeting in Middletown and, um, discussed going after the next round of, um, the grant that we worked on last year with all of our partners for the climate... Oh, sorry. Yeah, so we were just, um, strategizing grant, working on grants, um, with the Risk Reduction Authority. And then tomorrow, I have a full day of meetings, although one of them just canceled. Agenda review at 8:30. 11:30 is the bi-weekly home hardening meeting. 1 o'clock, I'll be here, um, for the LCR, Countywide Recreation Program meeting. And then we have a meeting with the Lake County Governor's Office of External Affairs. There is the all coad meeting. And then there is the Resilience Hub Q and A. Then I will head home and pack and leave early Thursday morning. Going to pick up Supervisor Spatier and come back.
Car's ready.
Okay. And we'll be back Monday. It looks like our flight comes in in the morning at, uh, 10:30. And then we got to come home. So I was hoping that we could reschedule something in the afternoon. Okay, but you're not available at 4:00? I mean, Monday. Monday at 4:00? Can we do it then?
I'll send an invite for Monday at 4:00. And Bruno, would you like me to send you an invite for 3 o'clock on Monday?
Sure, because 1:30 might be a little tight.
Yeah, tight. We can't stop for lunch. Okay.
Please and thank you.
So that concludes...
I forgot one thing, sorry.
Go ahead.
Tomorrow, uh, from 8:30 to 3:00 PM, Cal Water is putting on what is called the, uh, EOC Training and Tabletop Exercise to ensure the community is prepared to respond and recover from an emergency. CTE credits available. Pretty sure this is open to anybody. Um, and so it's at the castle, um, and it says all community stakeholders welcome. Um, Shannon McGovern from Cal Water had put it on and her email, this is what I have. So it's S M, S M C, sorry, I'll start over. S M C govern@calwater.com, so. Yeah, if you need a, I know it's short notice, but, um, there it is.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're finished with our closed session items and we will be taking a lunch break, coming back at 2 o'clock. We will then go into our closed session items. 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Initiation of Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.94, One Potential Case. 8.2, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, Interview for Public Health Officer, Appointment of Public Health Officer. 8.3, Addendum, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.91, Fork Project Number 77, Hyd- Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. 8.4, Addendum, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, Interviews for Chief Public Defender, Appointment of Chief Public Defender. And so that's it for today. And we'll come back here at 2 o'clock.